Move this meeting forward. I do see one other council member and council member Way in addition to Councilmember Moore and Willie are here. So let's proceed with item number 15. Item number 15 is under, is the last item under our current section, which is ordinances and action items. And the subject for this is the 2021 general plan annual report and housing element annual progress report or APR on forms required by the Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the staff presenter for item number 15?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go back to our community development director Ben Troop.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members concerned at time. I will just pass off to Carrie Huesler, our housing manager from Community Element Department. She'll be doing the bulk of the presentation tonight, and we're happy to answer questions afterwards. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ben, and welcome, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Carrie Huesler, and I'm the housing manager. I'm here tonight to present you with an overview of the city's progress in implementing our housing element in the 2021 annual housing element report. The general plan report was reviewed by Planning Commission over two meetings in November 2021 and January 2022. The housing, the HCD housing report was submitted to HCD on March 7th ahead of the April 1st deadline, and will also go to Planning Commission on March 22nd. So at the request of council, we will focus on the updates to the HCD annual performance report tonight. And if there's a need to expand on any material, Pughosh Planning Manager is here to support the general plan report detail. So an overview in accordance with state law, California cities must have an adopted general plan with a housing element. Cupertino's housing element is 2014 to 2022 certified in February of 2015 and adopted by council in May of 2015. Thank you, Pugh. And I think we can skip the background on RENA. We're covering a lot of this depth during our housing element process. I would like to highlight that each jurisdiction must prepare an annual progress report on the status and progress in implementing its housing element. So we're here tonight to provide you with further details. Here's an overview of the city's RENA entitlements for 2014 to 2021. In three of the four categories, we have far exceeded our RENA obligations. We have entitled and produced 417 total units counted, counted towards our annual housing element progress report. We have entitled 3,190 units which have not yet been produced. The only area that has yet to be fully entitled is moderate income. And I would like to point out that many of the moderate units are ADUs, and we continue to, we expect to continue to see production towards the balance of 67 units. We go on to the RENA generation by developers. Here is an overview of the RENA generation by developers. For the purposes of this report, they require that we only report building permits issued. In the last eight years, developers have applied for and been issued the following building permits. Overall, in 2021, the city issued 40 building permits, all of which are ADUs. You see that there is quite a built, quite a bit of housing that remains to be built. And so we can go on to the highlights, slide seven. One more slide. Table A, housing development application submitted. We had one application in 2021 for the Coach House, which is a 34-unit mixed-use project. For table A2, we can skip that. We highlighted it above. Let's see. RENA progress, that's the summary of our unit, it's of our progress. It's auto-populated. We can skip slide C, slide D. Actually, let me comment on table D, program implementation status. We are currently implementing all 26 programs and policies in the housing element, and the narrative outlines all of the updates in 2021, including rehabilitation project at Vista Village and extra efforts where the city's going above and beyond our housing element requirements. We can skip E. I would like to highlight in table F that we did not have any sites identified in the housing element for rehabilitation, but we have gone above and beyond the housing element and provided over $1,400,000 in loans and grants for rehab projects during this And then, that's it. That is the speed slideshow for the HCD annual performance report. And again, this is on forms required by HCD, and we've submitted it ahead of the deadline and remain in compliance on this report. And Pugh and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you for having us.
Well, well done, Carrie, on both the underlying work and the presentation. Let me go to our members of the public. I do see one with a hand raised. That is Jenny, Jenny Griffin. And so I'll remind everyone that you'll need to have your hand raised by the time that Jenny is done speaking with her comments in order to be called on for this item 15. In case anyone has joined us recently, item 15 was moved directly after item 10, and so we will be considering items 11, 12, and 13 next. Okay, so let's go on to Jenny. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Oh, my God. You know, I, I've spent a lot of time in this city going to meetings, and HCD has become a problem in the last year, two years. I appreciate the staff giving us a good report on this. The state may not think we're doing it, but we are doing everything that is required of our current housing element, even though the housing element has been put for, put before us as a gargantuan impossibility. I believe that HCD is being handled by, I would call it, it's being run as a random number generator. In programming, there are current programs for the oldsters who can program, not, this is before apps. There were things in scientific programming called random number generators, and they would generate strings of numbers that could be used in computations. That is my comprehension of how HCD is being managed by this state. It is a random number generator. We are getting statements that contradict. No one is in charge, and that is the goal. I want to make sure, yes, Cupertino is doing everything possible, but we have a random number generator running out of control in California, and it is running amok, and no one is taking charge. And there are powers up there that are letting it get worse and worse, and they know that it is bad. So I commend the city for doing everything possible. I just wanted to make sure that HCD was not giving us, was not, I mean, I've sat through these staff meetings before for the last several years. I recognize them. We've never had HCD blow up this way. Is HCD this year requiring more explicit information from us than they have ever before? Is this different than last year or the year before this staff report? I get the feeling that something's going on with HCD that we're not privy to, and I really, really, really think that we need to make sure that we are watching it as carefully as we can. It's, random number generator strings of code, of numbers are just like whack-a-mole. HCD has become a big game in whack-a-mole, and I don't want our city to get whacked. So anyway, I commend the staff, but I really, really, really have major problems with who is controlling HCD or giving them information at this point. But I commend Cupertino. And if you guys could just talk about whether any of the information from HCD has changed on this item in the last year, because I would be really interested in it.
Appreciate it. And our next and final speaker on this item number 15 is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I signed up to be notified for housing element issues, meetings, items, and I did not receive a notification of this item. I'm requesting that everyone who signed up for the notifications to the housing element be sent a notice. They should have been notified of this item, and it continues to not be sent out. Please fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. And that concludes our public speakers for item number 15. Let's bring it back. This is a fairly straightforward item under ordinances and action items, and I note that it does fall under action items. And so I'll just put forward a simple motion that council note this report as received. May I have a second for that motion? Councilmember Moore?
I second that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised?
Oh, sorry. I just find my video is off. So yeah, a comment. I hope that this report goes to the Housing Commission's agenda, so they can review it and be informed. I think in Menlo Park, this kind of report actually goes to the Housing Commission first before it comes to a council. But I know that there is deadline, but at least it should go to them. And I wonder what's the, is there an evaluation of effectiveness of the current policies? Can we get a draft on that? Because I think we need that for the housing element we are preparing right now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And so let's go to Councilmember Way this time.
So I would like, I want to apologize to staff. I think I emailed some questions in Saturday night. Maybe I didn't send for the send button. I do have two questions. So I usually ask ahead of time, but I'm gonna ask it now. On table, I'm just curious, on table, let me see, where is it? Where's my number? Okay, so I'll ask the first question, the last question first. Employee housing. I am not familiar with this employee housing item. It says the zoning ordinance is regularly updated to comply with state law. What has been done to continue to implement city's zoning code to allow employee housing in multiple zoning districts? This is like first time I see about employee housing. That's my first question.
Would anyone from staff like to address Councilmember Way's question?
You can answer it later.
Uh, Councilmember Way, I was actually gonna give staff an opportunity to ask all questions and comments after we get Councilmember comments. So why don't you ask your second question as well?
Second question is, maybe it's just a state form. The table C, it says no sites identified. No, it's not table C I'm looking at, sorry. Oh, okay, no, table A2. It shows there's no new construction in 2021, but there are all these addresses listed on it. So how, is this the form requested? I was just confused, because it says A2 shows that there's no new construction in 2022, but there are all these addresses listed under A2, table A2.
Okay, great. Does that wrap your questions and comments, Councilmember Way? Okay, great. I'm gonna take that as a yes. Okay, wonderful. So I'll bring it back to staff. Ms. Huesler or City Manager Troop, would either of you like to begin with addressing the comments and questions raised by Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Way? And Jim, I did see your hand raised a moment ago.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Ben or Carrie if they were able to help answer this question.
Okay, great. I actually do see a hand raised from Pughosh as well. And so, Pugh, why don't you take it away?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the responses to Councilmember Way's questions. With regard to employee housing, there's actually a requirement in housing element law to, for the cities to consider employee housing or offer zones within which employee housing could be built. And this, this is really to address temporary and permanent agricultural workers and their living arrangements. And as a result, while Cupertino doesn't really have many agricultural zones, we still have to consider that there are agricultural workers or farms within a certain range of the city where they would be, they might be traveling to. And so we do allow by right employee housing for up to six people in certain zoning districts. And then we also allow for larger employee housing situations, we do allow them in other zoning districts, but they do need a conditional use permit for that. So that's, that's the answer to your second, your first question. With regard to the second question, the PDF reports that were attached to this, to the agenda item are actually generated by HCD. The actual file is a very long form in Excel spreadsheets. And so if you were to line all the PDF pages that you have, that's really what the form looks like. So when you see the list of addresses, the numbers are actually reported on three pages down. So on table A2, we're, on table A, we're actually, A2, we're actually required to report out on projects that have been applied in this current year, projects that have been entitled, projects that have completed, got certificates of occupancy. So there's three different categories in which that we have to report out on. And so as a result, those numbers are reported in different places. But for purposes of the council, I think the table to best look at is table B, which auto-populates from all the information that's inputted in table A2, because that tells us exactly how many building permits were issued in that year. And that's what matters for purposes of RENA.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor, can I have one more quick question? I just found on my one more quick question.
Okay.
Yeah, it says certificate of occupancy that we really only issued 20, if I get the number, 24. Does it mean that in 2021, even though we have those, you know, permits and everything, but only 22 certificates of occupancy have been issued in 2021?
That's right. And those are mainly ADUs that were completed constructions. They could have applied for building permits in 2020 or 2019, but they, they received their certificate of occupancy in 2021.
Only 22 certificate of occupancy?
New units, correct.
That new, that's moving.
Right. It's not rebuilds of two-story homes or single-family homes. It's just new units that have been, that have received certificates.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Way. And would anyone from staff like to address Vice Mayor Chow's comments? I think one of the comments, the first one was about bringing this to our housing commission subsequent to this. Is that possible? Can we put this presentation in front of the housing commission? I don't see why we wouldn't be able to, but...
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't, wouldn't do that. We were planning on doing that as an information item. Anyway, we've done that in the previous years, taken a city council for approval, and that's FYI to our commissions. We can certainly do that.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Let's go to Councilmember Moore with the hand raised.
So this is a question probably for Ben and Pugh. So I noticed the table is back with the objective standards in there. So did, did the Planning Commission go back through in the, in the similar manner that we had done previously when I was on the Planning Commission?
Yes. So I can certainly say that we took it back to Planning Commission. They, you know, chose to go through it in the manner that they chose to go through it this time, and they did not propose any edits or amendments to the, the general plan policies in the manner that they did in the earlier year. So the, but the comments that were made, they are, they do reflect edits and updates from the previous years in terms of how progress has been made on those particular policies.
And I will, I will add a couple more. I think through, through your leadership at that, that one year, we went through the item pretty extensively, which set us up really well for the, for the subsequent few years. And so that, that was actually a very good exercise to go through, as you recall. So that actually went out pretty, pretty well, pretty successful for us.
Thank you. I'm really glad to hear that and that they could go through it quicker. Good. All right. Thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Well, at this point, I don't see further hands raised. I will recommend that follow-ups happen with regard to some of the comments and questions that are, you know, still pending at this time. But seeing the motion on the table and having had the presentation presented, I would like at this time for our city clerk to conduct the roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries the unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we are back to item number 11 at this time. Item number 11 is a review of our homeless jobs program, which is under our current fiscal year city work program, and to consider an adoption of resolution number 22-026, accepting the accounts payable for, am I reading a, oh, I see, because this is taken off of that accounts payable period. Okay, I apologize for that, that bit of a brain blip. Okay, and, and consider adoption of resolution number 22-026, accepting accounts payable for the period ending January 10th, 2022. And so I do see Carrie is listed here again as the presenter, and so I'll, I'll forego the nicety of going through our city manager. Carrie, welcome back. Did you want to expound more? Because we did go over this during the accounts payable item previously, but with regard to this item as agendized, would you like to present a presentation to the public and to council?
Sure. I have a brief presentation. My name is Carrie Huesler. I'm the housing manager. And good evening again, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to bring you the review of the homeless jobs program and the accounts payable item. To give you a quick background on the program, the fiscal year 2122 city work program includes the homeless jobs program with an objective to create a jobs program for up to two individuals for six months with a $200,000 budget. The city issued an RFP in fall 2021 and received one response from West Valley Community Services, who took the initiative to create a pilot program to serve the city's needs. The city then entered into contract with West Valley Community Services for $169,000, $169.58 to administer the program. The program provides salary and benefits through employment directly at West Valley Community Services to two unhoused residents from Cupertino. In addition, the program provides housing support that's necessary to stabilize the program participants during the eight, eight-month job training and employment process. In summary, the city's homeless jobs program is the only jobs program dedicated to Cupertino, providing jobs located in Cupertino to residents of Cupertino. And here's a quick background on invoices and budget, and give me one moment to quiet down my six-year-old intern. Okay. So a quick background on the invoices and budget. All expenses incurred are within the scope and budget of the contract. The remaining budget is on pace for completion of the program in June of 2022. I do want to report that since the staff report was written, we have learned in close part, in close partnership with West Valley, that one of the program participants exited the program last week due to personal challenges. And as a result, the budget and scope will reduce accordingly. So I'm here tonight with Director Alfaro to answer any questions about accounts payable. And we also have Sujatha Venkundraman, Associate Executive Director at West Valley, to answer any questions specifically for West Valley about program management. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. I'll go to our members of the public for any public commentary on this item number 11. I see one hand raised. That is from Jenny, as well as from Connie Cunningham. And so I'll remind everyone, please have your hand raised by the time that our first speaker Jenny is done speaking. And if you do, we will call on you for public comment on this item number 11. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. You know, I'm really proud that Cupertino has had individuals in this program. Yes, I'm sorry to hear that one of the participants was unfortunately had to exit program, but there are challenges. We've all been through a lot of challenges in the last two years. What started as a complete disaster with the homeless camp that was on the sidewalks of Wolf Road by 284, I think it was a year ago, two years ago, has turned into one individual having a lot of experience, potentially maybe being able to get a job. Another individual who just exited has had a number of months of care and concern and job training, and maybe that person will be able to have a brighter future at some point when the current challenges are taken care of. We just don't know. But I'm very proud that Cupertino has helped these individuals to go to a brighter future in whatever they're doing. I, I'm, I think that we need to find this as a very, very hopeful event in what has happened in the last two years. There have been many, many criticisms of Cupertino from many different people, politicians, governors, senators for the last two years. These comments are very hurtful, and many of them are untrue. And I think that we can hold this jobs program up as a shining example of the very, very best that is in Cupertino. We did it ourselves. We did not have help from outside agencies. We contracted with West Valley. I commend them for all their help. But we did it as a city because we cared. And if anyone dares say that Cupertino has no heart, that we are no good, then they just look at this program. I am very, very proud of this, and thank you for taking all the time and care and effort, because one or two individuals is all it takes for them to have a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And our next and final speaker on this item is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, good evening. Yes, my name is Connie Cunningham, and I'm on the housing commission, but speaking for myself this evening. I was just wondering, I agree that this is a good program, and I was just wondering if it's possible to, while the other person needed to leave, one person needed to leave, is there a way then to offer another person a position, or is that job being held for that person to come back? Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to West Valley Community Services, Sujatha Venkundraman, as well as Carrie Huesler for working on this program.
Thank you, Connie. Let's bring this back here. And so if there are further questions from council at this time, I don't see a hand raised. And so let me call on Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Moore now that their hands are raised. I will remind everyone before we go to Councilmember Willie that the default motion would be adoption of resolution number 22-026 after receiving the report. So let's go to Councilmember Willie.
Hi. We just lost Sujatha's picture there. It's actually a question for Sujatha. You know, a couple words from your perspective on our jobs program at this point in time would be great for us to, to hear.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Willie, and welcome, Sujatha.
Thank you so much, Mayor and the council. My name is Sujatha Venkundraman. I'm so excited about the program. Thank you for providing the RFQ and giving us the opportunity to apply. Like Jenny said, this is, this has been a success, even at, at least two participants in the program. They got all the supportive services that they needed, job coaching, financial coaching. Both the participants are involved in training, furthering their career. So from you, when you look at the perspective of the program and... What it's intended to do, it's do excited.
Great. Sorry, your, your video froze and your audio froze for a moment there.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Sorry. So yeah, from, so we are very excited. Like I said, it was a pilot. We tested it out. We were able to do this really quickly as we absorbed the two participants within West Valley Community Services. And that's the additional benefit of ramping a project that is such a short timeframe and doing the pilot. So we thank Carrie for all her support. And I'm super excited about this program and the future. If we have to do this, West Valley is still interested in continuing a program like that.
Great. Thank you, Sujatha. And Councilmember Willie, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, just a couple comments. You know, I mean, you know, I don't know that any of us can really ever feel what a homeless person feels. We can, we can try and imagine what they feel. Once a person is, is like that, in my view, how does that person come up with the, the wherewithal to try and, and start again? And by offering them, you know, a place where they can come and, and try without worry of failure, wow. To me, is there any better thing we can, can leave behind as our legacy? So thank you, Sujatha. So thank you, Sujatha. You know, let's, let's move on and continue and, and help another person, another two people. So thank you.
Thanks, Sujatha, and thank you, Councilmember Willie. And let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I was wondering, when the individual left the program due to personal challenges, is that individual homeless again? And were the personal challenges something in general terms that we could have some information about? Was this something that, you know, counseling could have helped in some way? I'm concerned about that. I would actually like a, a report from staff, and I, I can ask this on the end, at the end of the meeting as well. We approved the twenty-sixteen Measure A bond and that to generate up to nine hundred and fifty million for the acquisition or improvement of real property in order to provide affordable local housing for vulnerable populations, including veterans, seniors, the disabled, low and moderate income individuals or families, current or former foster youth, victims of abuse, the homeless, and individuals suffering from mental health or substance abuse illnesses. I'd like to know, since we have, have, we have this bond out there, what have the, what has the county been doing with this money? And how, what have they done in, for the cities with regards to the homeless situation in, in actual, you know, tangible results? Because I appreciate that we are doing this effort here, but what, we did this in twenty-sixteen. We approved this bond, the county. What have they done? We signed on to the, the task force to end homelessness for the county and which all their good things. It sounded like we were going to have something happen. And I'm not seeing the results with regards to the homeless population here. And so we're left going on our own and I'm, I'm concerned about the, the longevity of this program. Because what is going to happen? We want to be compassionate and, and caring for the people that we've brought into the program. What happens at the end of the six-month period? So for one individual, that's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars will have been spent. You have about thirty-four thousand dollars for income, plus another twenty-seven thousand dollars for housing, plus another twenty-five hundred dollars for clothing. What happens at the end of that six-month period? Are we pulling the rug out and, and, and sending this individual off to go fend for themselves? I'm very concerned about that and I'm, and I'm, I'm very saddened to hear that we, you know, had a person leave the program as well. So I, if there's anything, we could find out about why that happened and, you know, like some advice on whether or not this is a wise program for us to continue because we're going to have to make a decision about, do we have the resources here and what, what are the metrics for success at, at, at the end of the day? So, and I think maybe that's it. We need to have some, some metrics. What does success look like? And then also go to the county, go to the county and find out what they've been doing with this bond money. Okay? So with, with regards to success, I hope it means that we've sent individuals out able to get good living wage jobs and support themselves. That would be beautiful. So I'll leave it with that.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt resolution number two-two dash zero-two-six and that's accepting accounts payable for the period ending January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And it looks like for the purpose of further discussion. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to second that motion?
Yeah, I could second it.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. And I, I did see Councilmember Willie's hand raised.
I raised my hand to make comments.
I understand. So I, but I appreciate you seconding that motion. Let me, let me go at this point and then I'll, I'll count, I'll call on you, Councilmember Chow. So I, I, I think that it's important to take a look at what our supportive services are and what we could be potentially doing. I, I don't want to go too far afield of the actual item, although I do note that now that it's no longer strictly an accounts payable item and an update on our homeless jobs program, it, it does give us a bit more latitude to discuss. One thing I will mention is that at our Cities Association meeting last week, we did have a guest speaker, Aubrey Marigan from the Life Moves Organization. And there actually is a fairly significant development in Mountain View that was built relatively recently, but I think has something along the lines of a hundred units of supportive housing for, for the homeless. And this is not something that is, you know, a, a one-off. It's very significant ongoing costs. But if we're really looking to make a, a local dent in the, in, in the issue, I think ultimately that's, you know, the direction that we need to be examining. I, I think it's great, you know, and I commend Councilmember Willie for suggesting this initially in our work program. I think it's a, it's a great start for us to be looking at, you know, being able to provide a pipeline to, to, to employment. But ultimately, it, it really does come down to our facilities and resources that are available. So I, I would like to see, you know, more of a full-fledged effort in the future and, you know, to the extent that we can do something significant. I will note that the person presenting this item to the Cities Association last week was Supervisor Semidian, who does represent us in the, in the county. And so he did mention that there was something on the order of forty million dollars available to cities throughout the county right now for, you know, these particular types of programs. So that's in addition to your measuring, you know, dollars. And I, I will note with regard to Councilmember Moore's comment, you know, personally, I think she's spot on with regard to the Measure A funds in, in, in terms of, are we really focusing on the greatest need, right? Because on, on the, on the VTA right now, the, the Transportation Authority, we're looking at things called transit-oriented developments. And so not every transit-oriented development necessarily focuses on supportive housing for the homeless. Some, you know, as, as we've seen in our previous item, you know, for fiscal purposes or whatever purposes, they, they focus on different types of levels of affordability. And so, you know, it, it's nice to be able to see these opportunities here. Right now, there's significant amounts of funding going around, but of course, if, you know, we are really, really serious about, you know, trying to take advantage of these opportunities, mobilization has to happen in a relatively efficient manner. And so we have discussed earlier this evening with regard to other opportunity sites. And so, you know, I, I think we sit at a place right now where there might be some really significant movement going on. And I, I think we've laid the groundwork really nicely over the course of the years to, you know, be able to have credibility in the idea that we're going to be vetting projects carefully. But we are also at a point right now where some opportunities are, seem to be converging and hopefully they can be, they can be met in a fashion that effectively to the standards of our city, you know, addresses a lot of the issues that we've seen. So with regard to the homeless encampment on Wolf Road, of course, we did a really tremendous job, including, you know, West Valley Community Services, the community, City Hall. We all converged with Office of Supportive Housing in the county. And so I think it's a matter of keeping that going. You know, personally, I set aside a lot of the various critiques, you know, and criticisms and just kind of focused upon what the problems are. Because at the end of the day, you know, there are all sorts of motivations out there, right? I mean, we can basically, you know, talk until, you know, five AM in the morning with regard to, you know, what the real motivations underlying a lot of these things are. But, you know, it, it is indisputable that there is an unhoused population issue. And so, you know, with a, a lot of the support out there right now, it seems like we can be taking some, you know, fairly definitive action. As to this item, yeah, no, I, I agree with Councilmember Moore's comment that, you know, we should be looking at metrics. You know, we have a certain amount of money. There are a couple of people that were, you know, helped by this. One person, you know, dropped out, you know, as Sujatha had mentioned. But kind of looking at this from, you know, different metrics as well. I mean, now that we've created a bit of a framework, what can we be doing moving forward? So, so those are some of my comments on, on, on this particular item. So let's go, Sujatha, your, your hand is raised. Did you want to comment or you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Paul. You kind of gave a lot of strength of the program, but I did want to go to Councilmember Moore's, some of the questions that she had, which I thought I could address. So one of the things, when we went into the program, it was structured as ongoing case management. So we knew that we would have to leverage case management beyond the participant's time in the program. And the intention of designing the program, we've very clear that we either provide housing and the case management and the job training with a hope that they are new, the jobs either they had or do career development and enhancement and move into a position of interest. So to your point, this was, this is an ongoing built-in support. And I cannot go into details of the participant, but as you all know, that West Valley Community Services is a housing-first model and our case management is designed as a harm reduction model. The participant has the choice to come back to us and so we give them time and space, but all the services are available. If they are ready, we are there for them to support. So just, I wanted to make that comment for you. And the other thing is, we have had experience doing this kind of program where we move someone into housing and provide all the supportive services and we kind of know how long it takes, what it takes. So we had built in those risks and the supportive services already. So with this particular participant, like I said, and follow-through with housing options, that might be available for them.
Okay. Well, thank you, Sujatha. Interesting, I'm, I'm learning more features about Zoom. It seems like when there's a bit of a glitch and you freeze, you go really quickly, you know, for, for a second or two. Okay, I appreciate that. So we did hear all the content. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow. And then I see Councilmember Willie has his hand raised and so let's go to Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah. Certainly it's great that the city is doing what we can and I think the pilot group program is a good idea. However, as pointed out earlier, our property tax, the county actually gets three or four times the amount of, of what the city gets. So a lot of this, not only the state funding, but also federal funding from HUD goes to the county. The county has a youth homeless program. And the county also actually have a career path program similar to what we have. For example, this is a county webs, it's a consultant that's serving the county. They have a goal to end, by the end of two thousand twenty, they will enroll one hundred and seventy people in the job trans program. Seventy percent will have a goal of employed by thirty hours per week. So I wonder how much we are leveraging the county resource because I can see that in our staff report, we are, only sixty-eight thousand is spent of, on the two salaries for the two individuals, but there is a high of a sixty percent is administrative cost. So if we leverage the same program with the county, would that, that serve more people and with more experience since the county is already doing it? I wonder about that. So that's one thing. Another thing is, I watched the city plan to end homeless kickoff meeting. Fantastic presentation, a lot of information there about what the city has done. The city did a lot actually beyond this. However, it didn't give much information about what the county has done, which is what we need to know. We paid the property tax to the county. So how many Cupertino citizens, they have served, and can they help us or maybe provide part of the funding for this program that we are supporting? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And so let's go to, so Sujatha, did you want to speak to that? I mean, I, I don't know if our, our city staff should be, you know, following up in commentary to Vice Mayor Chow's comments.
I just, Mayor, if that's okay, I just want to comment on the county program and the leveraging and the rest, I would give it to Kerry and city staff. So Vice Mayor Chow, the way it works is the program that is designed by Destination Home, it is the people who are in the, in the queue, the community queue to find housing. So it's catered to more to rapid rehousing client. So it is a program design, but it is also structured on who is in, you know, have a, we have a huge wait list, people are waiting. So as I'm, yes, so we are leveraging that, but this was uniquely designed because this doesn't go into the county system of the waitlist. So I hope that's, I just wanted to clarify that there are two separate programs, if you have to look at it with two different lenses.
Okay, great. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Chow. And then let's go to Councilmember Willie. But if you had a quick follow-up comment, Vice Mayor?
No.
No? Okay, well, great. Councilmember Willie, we'll, you know, have you take last word on this for the moment and then we'll conduct a vote on, on the motion.
Yeah. Well, first I'll say, thank you for that additional information, Sujatha. Great. I mean, this is new to us. We have a lot to learn. If there is money out there, then by all means, I would hope that our city staff is looking, not just for this, but wherever, you know, there's money available for our, our city to get and utilize. But I would also want to say, you know, we, we can talk more about, as we do our next work plan and talk more of the details. So in, in some respects, I'm a little bit concerned that we're getting awfully detailed tonight in, in the sense of, you know, if we don't help these individuals, a year from now, what are they going to have to show for it? Oh, they were in the queue at Santa Clara. So I, I would just, you know, hope we're not going to be penny wi, uh, penny wise and pound foolish. These are people that are being checked, that they really are interested in getting themselves out of poverty and back into being self-sufficient. And how, how can we put truly a price on it? Yes, it is money. It is coming from our tax dollars. You know, thank God, if, if it were not for, for God, that could be any one of us out there on Wolf Road. And we would surely hope somebody would lend us a hand. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I, I do see a hand raised from Councilmember Way, who hasn't had an opportunity to speak on this item yet. So Councilmember Way, let me provide the floor to you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I just want to echo, the county program is great and then I'm pretty sure we, we can tap into it, but to help one person at a time, it's really a great way to help a real person. And these are people who live in Cupertino, who are homeless, or if they have mental health issues, that personal, one person at a time, I think as Councilmember Willie says, it is priceless. And so I, 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 I kind of want to say, the price we're helping with one person at a time is worth it. And then of course, we are going to tap into the county program and work maybe a globe more, serve more homelessness. But this, I, this program touches my heart. I just feel that if we can help one person at a time, it's really precious, precious. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. And that is our hands for this item. So Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so we are now on item number twelve. And just to do a, a quick... And just to do a, a quick procedural check here, to remind our members of the public, we only have items 12 and 13 left on our agenda. Item 14 was placed into the consent calendar. Item 15 was taken prior to this item here that we just considered. And so item 12 is to consider issuing a request to the Cupertino Union School District Board for reconsideration of the future closures of Regnart and Meyerholz Elementary Schools. And Mr. City Manager Trup, would you like to present the staff presentation on this item number 12?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, tonight I'm going to be, I'm going to be the one doing it tonight. So this was an item, a council request to bring back a letter, which was crafted by a council member to discuss the Cupertino Union School District's potential closure of two schools, Regnart and Meyerholz Elementary Schools. In October 2021, the school district voted to close the two schools and relocate the students to other schools within the district. Reorganization, if it takes place, would happen during the 2022-23 school year. And per the adopted policy for our city council agenda items, this item was added to the agenda at the request of two council members. But tonight, the council may consider taking a position on the potential school closures, should they so choose. And so this is open to the council discussion and consideration on whether the proposed letter should be approved and sent to the district. And that's a very quick but short report.
Okay, well, thank you very much, City Manager Trup. In, in that vein, and I think that, you know, we've set a, a nice rhythm here to encourage people to, to be succinct. I'm going to go ahead and move it over to members of the public who would like to speak on this item number 12. And let me just, you know, ask everyone, if you have thoughts on this, one way or the other, you know, greatly respected. But, you know, at, at the end, if we have a truly excessive number, I might try to curtail the length of the comments. But right now, we have the three minutes. I'm going to be fair to everyone. I see six hands raised at this point, seven and counting. Just, just try to keep, you know, aware of our, of, of our, of our time and respect the fact that, you know, this is, you know, something that ultimately is a, is, is a request. It's not something that is, is certain demand. And of course, there's the jurisdiction of CUSD, who has, you know, had the opportunity to, to, to hear and may, you know, have the opportunity to hear in the future. So I will go ahead and read off the names that I see with hands raised now. Those are Sheen Lee, Amy Pang, Helen Yan, Jenny Minishu, Stacy Yao, Cece Zhou, Jean Bedord, Jean Lee, and Manuela Silveira, as well as Tracy Kay and Joan Shu. So the same goes with our procedure for other items. As long as you have your hand raised by the time that the first speaker is done speaking, I, I will call on you. But again, I, I do ask that you keep your comments, you know, succinct. And by succinct, let me just say, you know, if you can keep it within a couple of minutes, that, that would be much appreciated. Sheen Lee, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for hearing the parent's voice to include this topic in today's agenda. We really appreciate. So similar to other parents that we bought a house here is because the excellent school district. So like Regnart, per the recent school score, is top eight within more than 1,400 California public schools. So I think it will be such a huge loss to the community, right, to close excellent schools. So tonight, I only want to make one point. That is, the CUSD, they decided to close the school, like Regnart and Meyerholz, in disregarding all the concerns and the questions raised by the parents. So I don't think those concerns and the questions have been properly addressed. That's why we request to reconsider the closure of Regnart and Meyerholz. So for example, the traffic concern. Since we live at Regnart School District and most of the students will move to Lincoln, right? The current traffic is already horrible. And we will worry about the safety of our kids. So I want the city council to help us to let push CUSD to reconsider the decision. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Sheen. And thank you for setting that, that great succinct example. I, I have two more names here, three more names. After Joan Shu, we have Betty Lee, Hunam Verma, as well as Tess Parrish. And so that will comprise, in addition to the names that I read previously, the public speakers for this item tonight. Our next speaker is Amy Pang, welcome, Amy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I will keep this short and sweet. I would really like to urge the board to, to push the CSU board to reconsider what they've decided back in October, because I do feel it is unfair. I do sit on multiple different parent boards. And one thing that we didn't cover was that there was a budget discrepancy. And I believe the CUSD needs to review the budget correctly because the financials look differently now than it did back, I believe in September and October, and even when the CAC was reviewing it. Also similarly, I would like them to look at the manipulation of enrollment data. One of the things that we also found as parents was that there was some manipulation of enrollment. And I would like CUSD to answer those questions. There have been multiple parents who have asked that question, and we have not received an answer. It's been, it's been requested multiple times. And similarly to the traffic study, my kids are also going to be pushed to Lincoln. And if you know from Regnart to Lincoln, anybody who lives in that area will tell you the traffic is extremely bad. Right now, it's not bad, obviously, because of COVID. But as soon as people start going back to that Apple campus and go to Deansa, it's going to be horrendous. And I really would like to urge the city to ask the CSU board to look at the data versus just making a blind decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Our next speaker is Helen Yan, welcome, Helen.
Hi, this is Helen. Thank you for, thank you Cupertino city giving this opportunity for parents to, to resent parents and represent the voters in this district. I think I echo whatever the parents just said just now. The decision CUSD made was based on information that was not correct and the information they revealed to the parents was misleading and was not telling the full story. CUSD actually had enough budget to support the schools. And our schools are actually more crowded than schools in other cities. All these facts are not shared with the public. And the CUSD member just made decisions regardless of, I think lots of parents showed up in the meeting, board meeting, disagreeing with the decision. So really, thank you, Mayor, thank you, board members. You guys can stand up and support us and let CUSD reconsider the decision. I think schools are foundation of the community, right? We all, I think all, all of us living in Cupertino would benefit from the good schools here. And neighborhood schools are particularly important, right? We want our kids grow up together with the neighborhood kids, having education together. And we don't want send kids to crowded schools, right? It's a, I think now it's really a trend that educators all know that smaller schools actually benefit it better, right? Why, why we are closing our schools and hurting our kids? So, so really, hopefully, like us, our city board members can help us to voice the concerns and really urge the CUSD reconsider their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Our next speaker is Jenny, welcome, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. You know, I did attend the Zoom meetings when this was happening. And I, you know, there, I'm just going to throw in, I'll be really short here. COVID, at this point, was going, still going on when this decision was made. I don't think a lot of the children were back in school or they were at home or going in and out, et cetera. I, I really, I think that we need to reconsider this decision. It might be a good thing for the board to go back and take a look at the new information. And now that we have moved the children back into schools, things are getting to more of a normal state, God willing. But I think we have new information about the schools. And I'm really, really concerned that, I really, I have been concerned all along about the intent to possibly sell schools or to rent them out. I think the children's need to be in the schools. And we probably have a big demand to have children in the schools. We, we probably need to rethink this, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Our next speaker is Mina Shi, welcome, Mina.
Hi, and thank you for city council placing this item on your agenda. And I, you know, we do appreciate it. And actually, last week, in the CUSD meeting, a school board member said she, she don't think the city should discuss this school closure issue because she believes the city shouldn't interfere with the school issue. But in our, in my eyes, the school closure issue is not only a school issue. Actually, it's a community issue. And it affect the traffic, the infrastructure, and may reshape our living environment if they close the school. So I do appreciate our city really give a chance for our residents to speak up and let you know our opinion. First, I, I don't think this school closure decision is reasonable because it was made during pandemic. And just as other residents already mentioned, we think they should consider it, at least after things go back to normal. And the second, many parents already studied the report on CUSD official website. And they found that the financial status is really not so bad now. So maybe CUSD should wait for next year after they renew the parcel tax. And then they can check the school status. Maybe they will find things will get better. So we hope they can reconsider their, the current decision. And the last one is, our city is discussing the next cycle of housing elements. So that means by following the state law, we have to build 4,588 housing units in our city in next eight years. And I checked the Sunnyvale. So Sunnyvale is going to build more housing units so in next cycle. So that means more new housing is coming. But they closed school and closed three schools at this time. Yeah, I, I don't think it's acceptable. So thank you for our city to discuss this item. I hope you can take a position and urge the school board to reconsider their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mina. Our next speaker is Stacy Yao, welcome, Stacy.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and, and council members. I'm Stacy Yao, the superintendent for Cupertino Union School Districts, and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. On behalf of the district, I would like to address the recent rumors that are circulating with our community regarding the Regnart and Meyerholz Elementary School closures. We understand concerns have been raised, and there may be ongoing efforts to reframe the district's October 2021 decision to consolidate and close schools as a hasty decision with insufficient notice to the community. Nothing could be further from the truth. Specific data addressing your points of concern outlined in your draft letter were provided to the council earlier today for your review and can also be found on our website. By way of background, the district has been grappling with declining enrollment at its campuses and the associated financial impacts across the district for many years, and has continued to share and engage the community in the conversations. In 2017, the first Citizens Advisory Committee was formed and recommended new programs and strategies to increase enrollment, to which the district implemented. In 2019, community listening sessions on enrollment trends and projections for the district were held. In 2020, the formation of a second CAC to facilitate engagement and input, this time led by a third-party neutral facilitator. The 2020 CAC's final report included, among other items, six possible closure scenarios and provided sufficient information for district staff to move forward with a recommendation for school closures and consolidation. In response to community feedback and in hopes of delaying a decision to close schools, the district elected to pursue a parcel tax to generate additional revenue. Upon the failure of the parcel tax passing in May of 2021, the district resumed conversations regarding the consolidation and closure of schools. More than five and a half years after it convened the first CAC to investigate signing enrollment, and in face of a total loss of 4,900 students from 2015 through September of 2021, the board adopted a resolution to close the Regnart and Meyerholz school sites at the end of the 2122 school year. While the district can appreciate that some community members are disappointed by the closure of the school sites, any suggestion the board's decision was either hastily made or ill-informed is inaccurate. As a sole elected body, entrusted with responsibility for public education in the district, the board understood the gravity of this decision and made it only after years of deliberation and community input, never losing focus on doing what is best for students. The district's school consolidation and closure decision was thoroughly vetted by the board and substantiated with empirical evidence. While the district understands the importance of the city council in responding to the pleas of their constituents, serving a letter which has no legal standing further divide the community, create false hope, and impede the work necessary for the district to focus on student learning. Thank you for your time and continued partnership for our student success.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next speaker is Cece Zhou, welcome, Cece. And Cece Zhou, you'll need to unmute your microphone in order to be heard.
I got it. Could you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, welcome.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Darcy and Mayor Liangfang and all other city, Cupertino city council. I think right after Stacy's statement, I have a few things I wanted to address. So first thing first, we really hope the Cupertino city council could approve to send a letter to CUSD school board and ask them to revoke CUSD Resolution Number 21-22-07 and start a motion to revoke. So closing Meyerholz and Regnart will have a long-lasting negative impact on community members, especially young people. So we hope you can help CUSD school board to understand the importance of this issue and urge them to listen to the community's voice. We haven't had any school closure in the past almost 40 years. City Council Willie mentioned about leaving a legacy, right? I can't agree more with, with him. The entire CUSD school district community member will thank you if we can all stand up for the community and help our kids. We have up and downs in the last 40 years, but we stand together as a community. And we overcome all kinds of difficult situations. However, now our district's financial status is healthier than ever. So the latest report shows $72 million project ending balance for 2025, 2026. Why do we need to close school now? So Stacy mentioned about low enrollment, right? So the enrollment number is based on COVID projection. And everybody knows during COVID, people pull their kids out because of the, you know, house, house concerns. And then other concern, they send them to either put them back to, you know, homeschool them or send them to private school. So the number is not accurate. At the same time, if you look at the statistics, if we close all three schools, Meyerholz, Regnart, and then John Muir, then our, our school district will have the largest school body than any other neighboring school. Will have projection of like 600 students in the school. But for, for all, all the other neighboring schools, the average student body is around 300 to 500. So we really need to consider, is that the right thing to do? And also, the previous, I think a community member mentioned, will be more housing built, right? Once we sold our property, what if we have more students? Where will be all the students to, you know, where could they go? So this is a long-term impact issue. We cannot just rush this into, you know, rush into decisions. And the one last thing I want to mention, during that decision, that, that voting procedure, right? Total five school board members.
Okay, our next speaker is Jean Bedord, welcome, Jean.
Kirsten, could you put up my slides? Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members.
My name is Jean Bedord and I am a longtime resident of Cupertino. I'm speaking tonight on the agenda item to approve a letter to the CUSD Board to reconsider closure of two schools. This letter is ill-conceived and riddled with inaccurate information. I urge you to get the facts directly from the communication submitted by Nancy Mack for Superintendent Stacy Yao earlier this evening, as well as comments by J R Fruin, who served on the Citizens Advisory Committee, the most recent one. Now let's step back. School consolidation is the, is the last resort for school boards. So let's look at the in, at the underlying financials. Property tax is the foundation for both school district and city revenue. But not all schools are equal. Unfortunately, CUSD has the lowest amount of property tax per student. Look at the disparities. Particularly Palo Alto, which has about the same population as Cupertino, but only two-thirds the number of students with double the per-student financial base. So these schools just don't have the same financial struggles as CUSD. Next slide. The school district has other challenges. Like all school districts, it has declining enrollment. Specific to CUSD, there are simply too many school campuses. There are twenty-five which are not supported by the declining enrollment. The biggest problem is the lack of affordable housing for families and a general lack of development. You saw that earlier in the Housing Element Report. Next slide. So how can council save our schools? The answer is obvious. It has increased the tax base. However, the majority council has missed opportunities to increase the CUSD property tax base. I urge the council to focus on actions that fall within its jurisdiction instead of second-guessing the very tough financial decisions that had to be made by our CUSD School Board. I urge you to vote no on this letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Jean Lee. Welcome, Jean.
Unmute. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Jean Lee and I'm happy to speak, have chance to speak out. And yeah, I'm lucky today because I was big, uh, after Stacy Yao. And I really want to say is, I don't think our financial situation is bad. I just compare to, um, from now to, uh, twenty, uh, I mean, twenty sixteen. Uh, our financial is so good. And, uh, so I don't think it's time to closing school during the pandemic. And also, I don't know why Stacy keep, I mean, pu- putting the numbers and the, the one before me keep saying that, you know, we are in really bad financial situation. Okay, um, if, you know, we both sides have a different opinion. Don't you think it's time to hold down the decision? You know, to have a two, one or two more years to make, I mean, uh, I mean, make sure all the, I mean, uh, the pandemic, um, pandemic, I mean, impact will slow down and, uh, you know, we can, we should evaluate the needs of the closing school. Closing, closing school is really big, heavy impact for family and the children in Cupertino School District. Cupertino School, School District, not just Cupertino City, is also in Crewe, West San Jose. Now closing three, I mean, school, neighborhood school to expand one more eternity school in West San Jose. I don't think that is reasonable because now West San Jose has a three eternity school. On Rainbow Street, on Bolinger Street will have a terrible traffic. Don't you think the kids' safety for those younger kids? Most of the younger kids, I mean, for example, like Meyerholz, you know, area, Meyerholz area has a lot of apartments. A lot of kids have to go to school, walk to school by their, I mean, by their own. There has no adults com- I mean, company with them to walk to school. How do you think they can walk from Meyerholz area to Dilworth? And the whole traffic terrible on Rainbow Street in the morning and the Bolinger Street in the morning. How can they handle to walk in a long way? So please, especially, uh, council member Wei Hong, please do not speak in, in the TV, I mean, I mean, uh, news. Talk about we, you know, the doing the recording is just a mad, uh, a group of mad parents, their school was closed. We talk about this wide, many, many, many times during the meeting, during the email, during the notes. We all bring out the issues. We all bring our issue. Now it's pandemic time. Closing pand- school in pandemic time is not.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Manuela Silveira. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This is my first time attending a city council meeting and I'd like to begin by thanking you all for the breadth and depth of discussion around such a vast range of topics. It's clear that this group has the best interest of our city at the forefront. Like you, the ci- the school board of the Cupertino Union School District has the best interest of all our students' families and staff members at the center of all of their decision-making. I'd like to voice my confusion and perplexity at the presence of this item on this council's agenda. I have been an active member of the CUSD community for over ten years and am highly informed about the data gathering process and the multiple scenarios considered before coming to the October twenty twenty-one decision around school consolidation in light of declining enrollment and responsible fiscal stewardship. I can guarantee that it was in no way taken lightly or arrived at without the utmost scrutiny. It seems clear to me that this questioning is being driven by community members that are unhappy with the decision. You are all public servants and as such, you know that there are moments in which proper governance calls for difficult decisions that will not sit well with all stakeholders. That does not make them incorrect or unnecessary. I ask you to remember that this is the jurisdiction of the Cupertino Union School District and that the public records show that they have done all of their due diligence in this matter. Furthermore, we are months into a transition process and any steps back will cause much harm to all of the individuals who have already been impacted by the decision and have already organized themselves around the new configuration. I'm talking about students, families, teachers, special education teams, and so forth. I urge you to retract this letter and cease all action in this regard. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Manuela. Our next speaker is Tracy K. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, city council members. Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight and for helping to urge CUSD to keep Regnar and Meyerholz open. I speak to you as a Cupertino taxpayer. We have put in countless dollars to CUSD for parcel and bond measures. And we are tired of seeing tax dollars siphoned out of Cupertino to go to schools in other cities. I mean, we have Bond Measure H, which we spent six million dollars to renovate Regnar, seven million to renovate Meyerholz, five million to renovate Dilworth, eight million to renovate Lincoln, nine million to renovate Stevens Creek, and now they're about to spend all remaining Measure H funds on Blue Hills, that's thirteen million dollars. Um, but I would like to ask, why are we paying to fix up schools just so they can be sold? Our taxpayer dollars are not meant to help create an attractive portfolio of lease sites for CUSD. They are meant to create a better learning and educational environment for our students. If we, the taxpayers, had known that we were paying hard-earned money to renovate schools that would either be sold or considered for closure, we would not have supported this ballot measure. To hear CUSD ask for even more bond funding after closing our schools is simply adding insult to injury. And going back to the point about seeing money leave the city of Cupertino, in an email obtained via PRA request, the CUSD Board named Saratoga and Los Altos schools as anchor schools. What does that make Cupertino schools? Second tier? Did we pay so much in taxes to hear CUSD insist that Los Altos and Saratoga ballot support is important while they ignore the entire city of Cupertino, over half its voter and funding base? We also provide ballot support. How can we, the residents of Cupertino, put more into a system that not only takes our money but subsequently penalizes us by closing our schools and redirecting our enrollment and resources elsewhere? We, the taxpayers, paid for better schools not to have children crammed into overcrowded schools. There are students sitting on the floor at lunch because there aren't enough benches for them to sit on. There are students that have staggered lunches and can't even socialize with other grade levels because their school is too crowded. This is quite frankly, a worse educational experience than the one I grew up with in CUSD twenty to thirty years ago. And the bumper to bumper traffic in front of Lincoln. Sadly, many parents are choosing to endure this traffic, um, coming from Regnar because they just didn't want to go to Blue Hills, which CUSD didn't seem to take into account which schools parents would choose in their decision, leaving now one giant oversized Lincoln that is far away and few parents want to attend Blue Hills. So there is a traffic problem coming down the line for which the city of Cupertino will be responsible. And one must question, if that many people are opposed to this decision to close schools, is it the right decision? Cupertino City Council, tonight, we thank you for your efforts in helping to keep Regnar open and Meyerholz. If this effort is successful, we commit to partnering with the city and CUSD to help make Regnar even more successful than it was before. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Our next speaker is Joan Chu. Welcome, Joan.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. My son is a fifth grader at Meyerholz. Uh, according to the school's bell schedule, um, there is a total of eight lunch bells. To accommodate the largest stu- uh, student body, um, the students at school are divided into four lunch groups stacked with distinct start and end bells. And the school lunch lasts, um, eighty-five minutes. To walk around the inappropriate large number of lunch bells and a very long lunch time, uh, Meyerholz limits breaks. So the students stay inside the classroom for two hours straight, three times a day. The campus also has very, uh, alarmingly large number of portable classrooms. Our school, Meyerholz, and the most of the schools within CUSD are already too crowded. And the infrastructure of most CUSD campuses was not originally designed for more than five hundred students. Let alone for some school now has one thousand seven hundred, um, commonly within CUSD. Closing schools make this matter worse. Please treat our young students with respect and dignity. CUSD's decision to close Regnar and Meyerholz is unlawful, unethical, unethical, and groundless. The school closure decision should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Our next speaker is Betty Lee. Welcome, Betty.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for the city councils for bringing this item on the agenda and listening to us parents. Um, I will make it short. Um, we moved into the city of Cupertino last year and our main reason to move here was to send our kids to a good school in a nice and friendly neighborhood. We were devastated to know that our neighborhood school, Regnar, was the school to be closed. Regnar is a high-ranking school in the Cupertino School District. I echo all the same frustrations, concerns, and questions from a lot of the Regnar and Meyerholz parents. We would like you, our city leaders, to urge CUSD to revisit its decision to close the schools. As a CUSD parent, the closure of Regnar without a reasonable cause will damage the representat- reputation of the city and the school district. We, as a Cupertino community, are looking for your leadership to help us, um, put pressure on CUSD to revoke on the school closure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betty. Our next speaker is Punam Verma. Welcome, Punam.
Hello. Um, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members for listening to our concerns and asking CUSD to reconsider the closing of Regnar Elementary School. Regnar Elementary School is being closed for no justified reason. The financials of CUSD are in great shape, which do not require any school to be closed in the district. Regnar Elementary is one of the best elementary schools in California, ranked eighth, uh, in schooldigger.com. In fact, not just the parents in our neighborhood, but also parents from outside want to send their kids to Regnar through open enrollment. However, in the last two years, CUSD has, for some unexplained reason, denied enrollment to many kids wanting to enroll in Regnar Elementary. And then later the board made low enrollment as the reason to close Regnar. And on top of that, they decided to not close a school that had lower enrollment than Regnar Elementary and a worse infrastructure. It is a well-known fact that the motivation of most young families to move to Cupertino are good schools in a friendly neighborhood. We are paying high taxes so that our kids get a good school environment. However, overcrowded schools and playgrounds, scenes of kids not having enough lunch tables, traffic safety issues around the school will discourage new families to move into Cupertino. School closure will definitely lead to decreasing enrollment in our city. The CUSD Board did not care for our community. They did not address our concerns of traffic safety issues, overcrowding of schools, and enrollment decline due to closing schools. They ignored our requests and pleas to not close the school. The decision is going to impact our kids and cause problems for our community and our city. We would like our city leaders to stand with us in raising voice against this unjustified decision to close Regnar Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Punam. Our next and final speaker under this item number twelve is Tess Parrish. And for the remaining hands, uh, I just, uh, remind you that you had to have your hand up before the first speaker concluded. Uh, and so, um, Tess, you are the last speaker on this item. Welcome.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you guys approving this item on the agenda. I am speaking to you as a citizen of Cupertino and a, uh, previous, uh, parent for Meyerholz Elementary. Um, I, I, I don't, I have not studied the financials and details. I have seen many, many threads going back and forth pro and, uh, in support and how the board has done everything they could to, um, do their due diligence and really took this in consideration, but in reading the threads, from what I can tell, the process of, uh, of including the parents has been exclu- excluded. And even though they have the, um, from what I could tell, of course, the advisory, uh, Citizens Advisory Commission or committee, I, it, I don't, haven't seen anywhere where they hired consultants to analyze and actually resolve the problems. And in not including the parents, it makes parents wonder, what happened? Why is this happening? So for example, it was brought to my attention that one of the items that they hired, they spent more money was on lunch aids. Yet, uh, here's a, here's a district that is hurting for money. They didn't ask the parents if they wanted to cover those lunch spots like they do at McCullough, like many other communities do. They have the parents cover some of the lunch spots. Would the parents, from what I can tell, were not included in those problem-solving situations. What they did, what, they haven't given a full, um, from what I could tell, a full account of what was done to fit, to possibly solve, uh, save these schools. It just, one thing after another. Um, for example, the governor gave extra money to, to businesses to save the businesses. They, he also gave money to save some schools. So the school district has extra money and it is, from what I can tell, not including that in their decision. This came later. Um, or if they did, it, it makes the numbers look like there's no justifiable reason for closing them. So whatever is going on, it is definitely not clear to the parents. It is not clear to me, uh, what's happening and, um, how they selected the advisory, uh, Citizens Commission is also not clear. I know one of the members there doesn't even have children and I think that's a, a big, uh, point, um, that should be made. I know Meyerholz, I heard, was zoned for, uh, Red I know Meyerholz, I heard, was zoned for residential. Are they planning to just sell it and build more residents? Makes you just wonder what the true motivation is for closing the schools when all these factors come into play and it just doesn't make sense. Thank you very much, and please, it's not your jurisdiction, but...
Thank you, Tess. And that concludes our public speakers for this item number twelve. I'll bring it back to council. I see Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised. And so Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to start us off on any follow-up questions or comments?
First, thank you very much, Mayor, for scheduling this item. First of all, this was a split decision by CUSD board. Two board members with engineering degrees who reside in Cupertino voted against the closure proposal. The three board members who voted for this happened to be one who reside in Blue Hill, the other reside in Montclair. Their schools are not closed, and the third one was the former president of the alternative school that got expanded. So that's a reality. And I consulted with a former board member, who is a financial professional. She said, she looked at the finance back in 2020. She said, "CUSD was not in financial trouble. There is no need to close schools." And that was before the government allocated extra money so that schools can stay open for the student well-being. And that was the purpose of those funding, but those funding has not been used to maintain, to keep the school open. I do have some, here is a slide that... First of all, why should city write the letter? When the city does a general plan amendment, for example, we regularly seek comments from other agencies, including school district, on potential impact to their capacity to the use of the property or traffic. This is commonly done. In fact, the city would appreciate an advance notice in the future of any such school closure decision or change of use so that the city can comment before the decision were made on the impact to the city. Because apparently, due to the traffic impact, the city might need to spend extra property dollars, extra dollars to fix the traffic, and we might lose our property tax because of potential declining property value. I highlight this in yellow because this is a paragraph that I will propose to add to the draft letter. And the second, has this been done? In Marin County, Novato Unified reversed their decision to close schools in the middle of the pandemic. Their superintendent said, "Our priority should be on getting students back to school without the distracting of school closure." And their county supervisor said, oh, sorry. County supervisor said, "Our children have been traumatized in the unprecedented pandemic. You need to meet your financial obligations, but it should not include the closure of a school." And I highlighted this in yellow because I'm also adding this paragraph to the draft letter, which I will share later. So did CUSD actually inform the parent following the process? CUSD keeps saying that they had formed the Citizens Advisory Committee in 2020. The fact was that that committee was not open to the public for it to attend. In fact, the committee members were told to not talk to anyone outside of the committee during the time they were meeting. One committee member was feeling guilty when she notified me about the school closure. That's when I first heard about that. And she told me she was not even supposed to talk to me. So how would the parents be involved with this secret 2020 CAC meeting? Yeah, they were probably when they recruit members, but once the meeting starts, they start meeting, they were told not to talk to any parents. But the education code actually said that the school should form a so-called 7-Eleven committee that should be governed by Brown Act to collect facts before making any decision too, so that there will be, will be no community conflict. It's true that it's not a mandatory, but it's a legislative intent. Therefore, CD has a best practice guide that says it's still the best to do it, just like when you cross the street. It might not be jaywalking, but for your own safety, it's better to follow the best practice. Then, yeah, so they did not follow. And then another thing, I, why, why do I, why is this so passionate for us? This is an enrollment chart for Regnar. I really feel Regnar was not treated fairly. Regnar enrollment has been much stronger than Blue Hills and Montclair throughout the years. Only until around 2017 and 18. After they, they, they had a 2017 CAC. Nothing was done, was done for Regnar, but the enrollment for Montclair and Blue, Blue Hill miraculously went up while Regnar's enrollment suddenly went further down. Why? What was done differently for these two schools? Was this ever discussed in the board meeting? No, they were never discussed. And the parents found out that the Regnar, not only students who would like to enroll in Regnar were turned away. TK were removed from Regnar to put to Blue Hills. And then you can see that after the pandemic, Regnar's enrollment was hit significantly. And the CUSD used the enrollment data from these two years to make their permanent decision. Yeah, I can move that. Okay. And then another thing is, do we have declining enrollment? Yes, we did. However, this, this shows the enrollment for the entire CUSD. The peak was 2013, 14, about nineteen thousand. By 2027, there is a drop of six hundred students. There are a lot of people advertising about, oh, declining enrollment. We were only six hundred students short from the peak of nineteen thousand two hundred. So at that time, the main concern was balancing enrollment between schools who are overcrowded. And according to the capacity that in the Cupertino's general plan, the ideal capacity of Cupertino is actually fourteen thousand. That's, that's based on the classrooms in the schools, not counting portables. And Cupertino has been adding portables in order to accommodate so many students. Now, finally, we have an ideal school size with a sound-breathing room, and they want to close schools. So let's compare school size with other neighboring districts. Now, the entire region is, has declining enrollment, not just us. Saratoga, all the other districts...
I'm just going to ask you to wrap if you can in the next minute or so.
Okay. So all the other neighboring districts, cities have smaller schools. Well, everyone have smaller three hundred, four hundred schools. If we continue to pack students to have five hundred or more schools, who will move to Cupertino? Cupertino will be, will have the biggest school that people cannot have. And then the question is, with twenty percent decline in enrollment, yeah, maybe we should reduce schools, but why neighborhood schools? Has there any been, any conversation on the size and the roles of alternative schools and their location? All four alternative schools are in the south, so they are drawing students from neighborhood schools. The way, the way I see it, neighborhood schools are the bones of our body. And then you are cutting one arm and one leg.
Okay, Vice Mayor, wrap up.
Get more weight. That's, that's not the right way to go. And then, like we said, that the pandemic, the ending balance of CUSD is better than they ever had in the past decade. The governor allocated more money to keep schools open. But CUSD is taking advantage of the pandemic to make closure school decision so that when the parents cannot attend meetings in person, the parents cannot meet the board members in person, and they have to make this decision. Why this year, when the government especially allocated money so they can wait? So they can focus on student well-being first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Wei?
Oh, I usually don't write anything. I like to say things from my heart. And I do feel for the parents because they're moving here, their schools are closed. But there, so I'm gonna just list three indisputable facts that nobody can dispute. If anybody continued to dispute these facts, and I think that's a delusion. Declining enrollment in CUSD is being disputable. CUSD has lost almost five thousand students since 2015, 2016. And it's predicted to lose another two thousand or more students in the next few years. This is, cannot be disputed. It's not, we're closing schools, so we're losing students. We're losing students because they're closing schools. A major responsibility of the school board, I was a school board for eleven years, or city council members, is fiscal summons of the entire school district, which includes six cities. This district CUSD is an excellent school district with twenty-five schools. It cannot sustain the current number of schools. No school board members want to consolidate schools or close schools unless absolutely necessary. Look at just what they're doing under the attack, okay? Nobody wants to do it. The board has known, at least in the community, know about declining enrollment and the possible closing schools for years, at least the last two years, continuously talked. And CUSD board did not make this light. It conducted rounds of studies, engaged Citizens Advisory Committee, which is equivalent of a 7-Eleven committee, actually better.
No, no.
Now, multiple meetings at different school sites. This due diligence and transparency are fully documented at CUSD website. I mean, they have tried, okay? No school board wants to close schools. That's it. Yes, CUSD will likely transition into basic eight, just like the school districts as mentioned. Harawato School District, Saratoga School District, San Diego School District. Why do they losing students but not closing schools? Because they're already basic eights. Smallest, lower students are better for them, but CUSD, it's not the case. But CUSD, once they're transitioning into basic eight means they cannot sustain twenty-five schools. Look at all those schools, have fewer schools to maintain. So the board had to make that decision. And look, CUSD has twenty-five schools. What does San Diego have? Ten schools. Okay? So that's a fact. Second, CUSD has always been among the lowest-funded school district in California. That's a history. It's a well-known fact. If anybody who's ever been a school board member or care about public education, they know that. However, CUSD, the board, and district have always taken the utmost step in applying its limited funding to benefit student learning, to provide best education programs, become the best teachers. CUSD with the lowest funding has always been the top, top school district nationwide. CUSD has always been out one of the best schools nationwide. They were, in the past, with limited funding, they will continue to be the best school district. We have confidence in that. In the past, in the now, and we do it in the future. So that's school consolidation, really. Nobody wants to do it. Just look at what these school board members are being treated, okay? So now, in October 21st, the CUSD board made that basically responsible, well-researched, and courageous decision from solid their scores, knowing that this is not a popular decision. And why didn't they just say, "Let's take, gang, gang, gang down the board. Let's use the one-time money. Let's not close schools." Why? Because this board knows that it's the utmost responsibility for any governing board is to apply that limited funding to programs and resources for teaching and learning to ensure CUSD continues to offer the best education for all students. The district has moved in October to implement parent choices for all affected students. School consolidation has been in progress for months. Board President Sakeesh explained this clearly in his letter. I'm quoting his words. "The district has begun implementation of the closing schools and working with families and staff for the transition. Continuously reopening final decisions would prevent the district from reaching new businesses and the district from implementing directions." Now, I'm calling to community members and parents. It's time to move forward to support parent-student transition, to support your local schools. And CUSD will continue to be one of the best school districts nationwide. Now, my third point is all about us. This proposed letter, yes, it has the points that you can, you can translate, you can, you can make it to fit what you desire to be. But does this council really want to go down the record in supporting this knowing that the media is watching, that other communities are watching? We are doing something that's not, we want to collaborate. We want to solve traffic issues. We want to help CUSD students and parents to be safe. But it is not our place to dispute the facts and what CUSD board and district have done and put them under the bus. This is not the way to do it. This is a long process, carefully considered. It is guided by school code and legal consent. It is through, out through and through. They did a great job. So it is up to the elected CUSD board to make that decision. What's the best for their school district? Yes, we can always say, "You should do this. You should do that. You should use the one-time money. Don't close the schools." But it is not, we're not elected by the residents, by the public to govern CUSD school board. Trust their decision. They have their best students, the best interests of the students, and school district in mind. School excellence, CUSD will always maintain. They've been always done it with lower, lowest funding, yes. But they've been the best school nationwide. You cannot dispute. CUSD runs well. There's no, there's no way we should criticize them. It is not up to the city council to second-guess CUSD board's decision. They are elected officials too. But it's three-two, four-one, five-zero. It is their decision to make. I'm okay. Indecent council members, please, send your letters. Talk to CUSD board. Protest, saying that if I were school board member, this is not what I'm gonna do. But do it on your own accord. Represent yourself. Because your decision, represent yourself, you're knowledgeable, you can do what you want to do, you can alternative methods, that's fine. But it does not represent the council. It does not represent all our residents. We have sixty-five, or maybe, maybe a little bit less than sixty-five thousand residents now, okay? And it does not represent me. I love our schools and I love our fans. When I was a school board member for eleven years, I can proudly say, I never, never let one email slip. I always return parents' emails, meet them in person, talk to them, understand them, but that's not me. I don't, we don't try to make courageous decisions for the benefit of our students. The board did made a very courageous decision because there's a lower enrollment in Lindbergh High School. We have a thousand parents come to us for me. But what we do is, Lindbergh is a great school now. Still, it's before and still now. We're gonna go through this turmoil. Our heart is with the parents. But we need to, this is the time to get together and help your school district, help your school. Make that school your school. Put your energy and make your kids' education excellent. This is not the time to divide, continue to divide. CUSD's already made their decisions. It is really not a time, according to President Sakeesh, who voted against this, that he knows that this is the right thing to do. And I have my admiration for him. As for funding, one, if you know school funding, you know one-time funding cannot be calculated into ongoing funding. Parcel tax, two failed parcel tax. Can we guarantee the third one will pass? We cannot. If the school district go bankrupt, the consequences are dire. CUSD board and the district are doing their best, really, to make sure education excellence continues in Cupertino women's school district. We are here to support them. How can we solve the issue? Yes. How can we help their kids to want to school, buy to school? Yes, but not to send this letter. This letter does not represent Cupertino, does not represent the rest of... We could represent your own opinion, send it as much as you like, it does not represent me. I love the district, I love my community. I and all of us need help to begin willing school district passes. As for the lowering enrollment, we can build housing now, but they're not gonna come, these are not gonna come the five, six years. We're not gonna see housing five, six years. Declining enrollment is a fact, this cannot be disputed. CUSD made courageous decision to not put one time money into maintain a school for another one or two years. They are going to put this money into resources to educate students, to make sure they become good teachers. To make sure CUSD state a top school nationwide. Let's do this together. Let's not divide.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, I'm gonna ask you to wrap now.
Oh, you know, I, I went off my script now already because I always want to talk deep in my heart. Okay, our heart are together. I know Vice Mayor Chow means well, everybody means well, all the parents means well. But this is not the time to divide. This is time to get together. Make sure we provide education excellence to our students. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next we have Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. I'm not gonna rush. Wow. I'd say we've got a couple hundred emails from residents. And not just one period in time. Through the schools process, we got resident emails all through those. If you were to add up those with these hundreds of emails. The five of us are elected to represent the residents. We're here to listen to the residents. It's almost eleven o'clock tonight. I've got three young kids. I'm here to listen to the residents. I'll be here at midnight, I'll be here till one in the morning, until three in the morning. I'm here to listen to the. And when I don't want to listen to them, it's time for me to step down. Now that we kind of understand why we're here, now we have something in front of us, and let's talk about it. Clearly, in the emails and the residents that have spoken, they feel. They have been listened to. They don't feel they got the answers. That's important. And if the process to, to spend more time listening to the residents and giving them information. That is the job, whether it's us up here or CUSD. So, we're here, we're listening to the residents, the residents have come to us. Now, what do we do? I have so much action for our mayor. Mayor Paul has gone to great extent to get. Consensus for our important decisions. For the hiring of the new city manager is just one example. We spent so much time to get consensus. And we did get consensus. We listened to each other. And we decided what the best solution was. Now let's go and talk about CUSD. Have, have they truly done what they, they really should have? Are they really understanding their obligation to be listening to the residents? I listened to Superintendent Yao tonight. I don't mean this in any disrespect. But I'd like to share my screen for a minute. She referred to what, are, are you seeing my screen yet? Or did it freeze up?
Uh no, it's just dark.
Um, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what to do. I kind of lost control. Do you want to continue on and I'll, okay, wait, okay, I'm back up. Did it, is it up and on?
It is, yes.
Yes, so she referred to what has been sent to us on the city council. I think this is what she's referring to because it came from the district. And I'm bothered very much by what they did to the slides. They put the claim on the left and the facts on the right, and they put faults over it. False, 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 false. I mean, I, I'm very much bothered by this type of propaganda. Is this really how we communicate to the people that elected us? To represent them? I mean, I didn't want to show that. To me, it's, it's just not nice. And I listened to Superintendent Yao and I, and it sure sounded to me as an audience person. She wasn't here to listen. She was here to tell. If, if CUSD has important information about our streets. Or about something in our community, I want to hear. I want her to come and I want to speak, and I want her to know, I'm not gonna make a decision. Until I hear everything that is out there, I'm gonna do my damnedest to make sure. That I get the answers for the residents that are asking questions. Even we make a decision, whether it's Regnar Creek, talk to our, our, our community. How many times has Regnar Creek come back to our council? For additional issues that the community has raised. We're not shutting them out. We're saying, come on, come and talk to us. So, I believe we need to convey that to the CUSD. That I hope they can raise themselves to the level that we hold ourselves to here. In terms of listening to the residents and providing as much dialogue, as much conversation as is needed. The letter that's been prepared, I think Vice Mayor has done. A pretty extensive job. I think I would not put the details in there. I would simply say, we have heard from our community. This is what we judge ourselves on in terms of listening to the community. We hope that you will continue to listen to the community and continue to provide dialogue with the community. I'll go back to my admiration for the mayor and getting consensus. Three to two is not a consensus. If they would have considered closing two schools rather than three. Would it have been three to two? If they had considered closing one school rather than three, would the consensus have been five to zero? I don't believe Mayor Paul would have, would have conducted this council in that fashion. I do think we should send a letter to them that indicates. The standard that we hold ourselves accountable for in our community and that. What we're hearing from the community, I don't hear from the community with, with respect to our agenda items. Even on the, even on the, the controversial ones like Regnar Creek. We, we go till two, three o'clock in the morning if we have to. And continue it, so I think that would be the appropriate letter to CUSD. Tell them, we feel they should be listening better, communicating better with the rest. And hopefully trying to get a consensus, a better consensus when making those critical decisions. To our community and I'll leave it at that. It's, it's a sad situation in school. This is sad.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, I appreciate you wrapping. That's um just about the same amount of time that. But the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Wei um spend in their, uh in their dialogues. So let's go to Councilmember Moore at this point. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, I, I am sorry that CUSD found themselves in this difficult situation. And that this was brought to Cupertino Council. As if we are auditors and better stewards of CUSD than their own elected officials. I would like to hear from our uh city attorney and our city manager to weigh in. Because we did not actually receive a proper staff report. We um have a letter in the package from uh Vice Mayor Chow. Um, who I will presume uh worked to put this on the agenda. And I would like to hear what our, what, what the city has to say uh for advice on this matter. Um, because so far we haven't heard from them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Let's um bring it to Jim first and then Chris, our city manager, Jim.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. This, as I mentioned earlier, it was a short um agenda item. It was a council request. There wasn't much that the staff could do in terms of research on this. It was um. Again, as, as Councilmember Moore said, it is a school function, um so we presented the item as requested. I, you know, I, I think this is a, one of those areas that, that. A city is responsible for the city side, in my opinion, since I've been asked versus the school district, but it is a council decision. I think there's been good discussion on it. I know I can see from the council right now, there's definitely two sides of the coin that they're both um. Speaking of, so, I don't know, Chris, if you have any.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just try to respond um directly to Councilmember Moore's question. So it is um consistent with culture, with council's adopted policy that if two council members request an item be agendized. It's put on the agenda. Um, so, and so, so, so that was done um by the city manager in consultation with the mayor. Uh, there is, there is, and then, you know, and, and we presented a letter that, that Vice, the Vice Mayor provided. To, for inclusion in the agenda. Um, there, there is no council policy around council submission of agenda materials, at least. That I'm aware of. Um, and, and so, you know, we made the decision to, you know, to include that letter. Um, but to be clear that it, you know, it wasn't a staff letter, it was, it was prepared by the Vice Mayor. And so we thought that was the, the most uh objective way to present the information.
I can add one more, Mayor, since I was asked. The uh, the way the budget works for a school district is so much different from a city's budget. It's very formula driven. Uh, again, I haven't looked at their budget. I don't know anything about it, but I do know that it's nothing um. Similar to a city's budget on how they calculate everything. And so if they're putting forth um the numbers that say the funds are down, they have to, they must do. They're required to do a forecast on their student enrollments, and that's usually a lot of times either done. Could be done in-house, could be done with a third party who looks at those enrollment figures. And if they're showing that downward trend, they have to take that into account when they're sending it off to the state for their budget. And they do have to look out prospectively, not just currently, but look out forward to see about the budget. So there, there, it is a very different process, and I'm not sure if everybody is aware of that, not just on council, but I mean, in general, the public. You know, but it's not the same as a city.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Jim. And let's uh bring it back to Councilmember Moore. Your, your clock is running, Councilmember Moore, so if you wanted to further deliberate.
Um, that's, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, does anyone want to set forth a motion for um this item? Otherwise, there's no, um, you know, there's no topic to further deliberate upon. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so I'm not gonna make a motion. Point, going to say that I Superintendent Yao has stayed with this council meeting. And has heard our comments. I, I think as long as that happens, um, then I think the message has. Made what we hold ourselves uh to our standards and getting a consensus and. And at that point, I think it's between the residents and the district to, to work out those details. You know, you, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And so I, I won't put that motion forward, but if one or the other count. I, the reason I wouldn't put it forward is consensus, consensus. And I don't see that there is a consensus, and so I, I don't think that that would be appropriate to bring it forward. So I'll leave it at that, and to the community, I'm listening to you. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I appreciate that. And um, you know, without any further. Um, movement forward on this as a, as a motion, um then. I will go ahead and, and make a few comments. I, you know, I did have a brief conversation with the superintendent yesterday. Uh, we had been, you know, playing some phone tag for about a week, uh just trying to catch up with each other on this issue. But I, you know, I, there's nothing that I can't disclose. Um, you know, I, I'm similar to Councilmember Willie, a parent in the school district. I have a first grader and a fourth grader over at Meyer Holt's um in, in the language immersion program. And so they will be affected. Um, you know, people have talked about, um, you know, the fact that. The CLIP program is uh going to a different school and, you know, expanding in a manner of speaking. I mean, you know, my, my personal preference is actually to have uh my kids more in an environment that is uh similar to a neighborhood school, frankly. Um, but I also, you know, value the opportunity that this particular program provides. And so, um, you know, that, that's just on, on a personal note, in, in terms of, um. In, in terms of how I think, you know, the, the stewardship of the district is going, I, I, I just have to say it's, it's very difficult, right? I mean, as a parent, I listened to um several of the um mid-pandemic meetings. Um, you know, CUSD and its board has a, a tough job. I mean, just like, you know, every other. Uh, elected body, you know, in this country right now, uh and for the last couple of years. But particularly, you know, the school districts, um, there, there, you know, are, are always a, a, a number of, of various tensions at play. But, you know, when you're dealing with uh people and uh their, their children. And the well-being of their kids, the education of their kids, it's, it's a really um, uh, a, a really difficult task. So, you know, I, I truly respect the uh amount of time and effort that goes into those decisions. I, you know, I, I would just say, and, and I'm aligned with Councilmember Willie here. I really appreciate his sense of consensus. Um, and I, I really think that this kind of a, a letter, you know, probably should be sent with a consensus on a council. Um, you know, the letter's out there. Uh, it, it is in our published materials at this point. But um to, to send it out on what looks like, you know, would be a split vote. I, I think it's um, you know, the, the, the point is really, um, you know, made already with regard to. Um, you know, the concerns that are out there. This is what I would add to the conversation. I, I, I think that this ultimately does not behoove the district. Um, and I just say that as someone who's a, you know, participant in, um, you know, the um area of elected representation. I think ultimately, you know, if you're going out to try to uh seek. Uh, further parcel tax continuation, a new one, a bond measure. Um, taking a situation where so many of the um residents have, have felt a very intense sense of alienation. I, I really question whether there does stand a chance to be able to do what's best for the district financially in the future with. In the future with regard to being able to say to yourself, well, from a statistical perspective, because, you know, a lot of people are talking about numbers these days. And for this particular issue, you know, it's it's tough, you know, you know, these types of ballot measures. They they need to be, you know, generally supported. So, you know, I I see it from the electoral perspective. And go, you know, as a parent in the district, you know, what would be best for my kids to make sure that the district is sufficiently funded? So when I take a look at this, I really look at it from the practical perspective of, you know, from a broad based, you know, viewpoint. What what is really best for the the stewardship of the district? Are you talking about saving a certain amount of money? Closing a school versus the amount of money that could be raised with a bond measure or further parcel tax? I I think those numbers, one dwarfs the other, you know, frankly. And so, you know, I I. I do respect the, you know, the challenges of another jurisdiction, but I do. Agree with the fact that, you know, the schools are in our jurisdiction, you know, we have a lot of residents affected by this, and a lot of people are asking us to consider. I would ask that the, you know, school board examine this and, you know, take a more holistic approach to whether this makes sense, you know, the. One of the things I will say, you know, we as a council, you know, get hammered and hammered and hammered. And a lot of it is by development interests, where they kind of provide a bit of a paradoxical, you know, story where they basically say. Well, you should you should put more housing in, but a lot of people advocate for more housing within the context. Of putting in so many more squares of other uses that require even more housing than the amount of housing that we're putting in. And so, you know, when when you have that kind of backdrop. And you have people accusing us of saying, well, you're the fault of why our schools are not sufficiently funded. You know, what they what they neglect to tell you is that, you know, one of the repercussions of in a school enrollment is a transition to basic aid. And what does that mean financially? Well, that means on a per pupil, you know, basis, your amount of funding is going to go up. And, you know, it's something that people don't really talk about. The other thing that they don't talk about is the pressures from the employment base. You know, the other thing that, you know, our city manager didn't mention is that there's an extremely strong employee union. And, you know, there's always in the midst of negotiation with regard to, you know, compensation increases. If you have a certain amount that's there and, you know, some could be used for a particular purpose and some could be used for compensation, you know, ultimately. And I've always been a supporter, a strong supporter of the unions. You can, you know, look at my website and and just see that I just I put it clearly out there. It's permanently affixed. But I think at the same time, if you're looking at, you know, the good of a district, if you're looking at. Making sure that you're serving the people that are, you know, forming the tax base, you're treating them, you know, like you see them as 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 human beings. I I mean, I listened to a lot of these meetings over the course of the pandemic, and I wonder, you know, where's the compassion for the parents? Where's the compassion for the parents that are basically setting up a school inside of their homes and holding down a couple of jobs? And trying to figure out how to, you know, manage all of this. And so, you know, I I think. That if there could be some reciprocity in those types of understandings, we'd probably be in a collectively better place. But at the end of it, you know, I I would tend to strongly encourage a reexamination of the possibilities here very respectfully. You know, and this is not a demand. If you actually read the letter, it is it is very respectfully couched as something for asking for reconsideration. It doesn't say you must do this because of X, Y, and Z. And and so, you know, at the end of it, I think we're all one community and we all want to be able to make sure that. You know, our students do well and that our, you know, community members are are all actualizing to an optimum degree. And I think, you know, just from my my perspective of things, you know, ultimately, if we all pull together, we can get that funding done. But I I question in this kind of situation where, you know, I have examined the finances. I I do question in this situation whether it is truly necessary at this time, at this point. And and, you know, another thing I want to say is that when that parcel tax didn't pass. You know, and then immediately the the conversation still mid pandemic became a matter of, well, you got to close these schools. I kind of wonder, you know, you know, it just it feels like it feels like a message, you know, honestly, I mean, so we can't, we can't. Delay this a year, you know, past when, you know, we're all beyond this and we're reopening again. So so, you know, these are concerns that. I think are not necessarily limited, you know, to this context of schools within this community. I I do. I I think people really need to make a particular self examination when they approach our community. And ask themselves, why are you treating us like you treat us, you know, and, you know, I say that from the bottom of my heart as well, you know, as someone who. You know, in his late 30s, you know, dedicated a lot of time to making sure that our community. Can can continue and grow and be successful together and help others as well. So, yeah, no, I won't be seconding. A motion at this time. Councilmember Willie has convinced, I think, very accurately that we don't have consensus on this one. But I I think our sentiments have been set across. And I honestly think that all of us, you know, each and every one of us wants what's best for our students in the district and hopefully, you know, these sentiments can be. You know, absorbed. And I know I know that they can, you know, we don't need a definitive kind of like, you know, kind of a prize of a letter to, you know, kind of shove into someone's face. I I think we have very intelligent people that can understand, you know, what's being communicated here. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. And so I'm going to ask that we wrap. We're actually doing pretty reasonably well on time with regard to. The ability to get done by midnight. We're in fact a little bit ahead of the projected schedule when you. Take a look at all the items that we have on here and what their estimated times were initially. But Vice Mayor, you know, since you and Councilmember Willie did set this forth, let me just go ahead and provide you the opportunity to provide a last word. On this. And so if you can contain it within a few minutes, that would be much appreciated.
So first, I'd like to clarify. That the CAC conducted in 2020 definitely did not meet the requirement of the 7-Eleven committee. Which should be a brown act to the committee. If any CUSD staff continue to insist on that. You should get them to say that in writing because that's simply does not meet the education code. And since Councilmember Han Han Wei was misinformed about that. And I'd like to ask Chris. So I think the city have usually. Or approached to make to to make approach to make comments on. Things that other public agencies do, right? So this kind of letter to provide comments for another agency's decision is common, right?
The city has done it in the past, for example, on county actions. So it's 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 certainly not unheard of. For cities to weigh in on things that they're interested in. It is ultimately a policy decision for council to make. It's not. A legal question, strictly speaking.
Okay, so I understand that. So it seems this council is. I know it's hard to ask them to reconsider, but unfortunately, we were not approached. By CUSD to make comment in the first place before they made the decision. So what if we change this letter to say? That we. We are not asking you to reconsider, but we would like to be informed. Ahead of time before this kind of the. Any school closure or change of use property use decision is put before the board so that the city has a chance to commit. And so does that make sense to? Make that kind of request to a school district?
Is that a question directed at me?
Let me speak to that first, Chris. You know, we we do have a couple of, we do have a couple of council members that are on. A a committee that interfaces with our school districts. And so, you know, I I can see easily that we're going in and, you know, producing. Producing a deliverable that, you know, talks about the communication process and workflow, certainly. I mean, I I don't think that it's, you know, an appropriate subject of tonight's discussion because it requires more of a. You know, thought out consideration of, you know, the various processes of our respective jurisdictions. So. But, you know, Vice Mayor Chow, I wanted to, you know, provide you that opportunity.
And also, yeah, thank you. And also another another fact, I think the CUSD continues to. Misstate is that school closure was never put on the board agenda until July 2020. They did have a listening tour in 2019. In January 2020, the board had discussed. What they reflected on what they have heard, and then the consensus at that time was to not close any schools. So their initial charge for the 2020 CAC was simply to explore options. And school closure was on the February 13th meeting of 2020. The superintendent restated the board's intent at that time. And so. The board members themselves may have this discussion in private. But in any of the public meeting, in any of the messages from CUSD school closure was never ever clearly mentioned.
Another, no, feel wrap much.
Therefore, parents were surprised. And then the so. So I wonder if if which can we at least request this kind of decision in the future? Would it require a comment from the city so that the city has time to provide comment on the traffic impact on our residents? So we can help inform our residents.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And, you know, as noted, you know, I think that's the subject of the the work of our. Our committee members from council that interface the schools and hopefully that can, you know, come back if it's.
No, I actually I'm requesting, I I am making a motion to write, draft a letter. Maybe we can have a subcommittee to draft a letter. To this effect to the to CUSDs as a council. And because that part, that two by two committee is very informal. And that two by two committee, I don't think they were informed either. And even if they were informed, there there is. Yeah, I would like to have a formal letter that we request the city to be informed for future decisions so we can provide comments.
Okay, well, that's, you know, that's a motion that that you've brought. Let me ask if there's a second. Councilmember Willie, are you seconding Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
I'm I'm going to comment. I would be willing to second it if I heard positive support from Councilman Moore and Councilman Way. I do think we need consensus. A dialogue, an understanding of dialogue between the city council and CUSD. To me, sounds like, you know, something that I would have expected it to occur. And the fact that it didn't occur, I would think that gee whiz, the least we can do is. Say, please let us know. So if if we can get two other councilmen to. Agree that that would be a good thing, then I would would be willing to. If they wanted to second, I would have no problem letting them, you know.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Way?
So I want to ask a couple of questions for this this motion. Do we not know that the CUSD was talking about school closures? Has any one of us went to their board meetings and ever talked about it? I'm asking that question. We can't pretend we don't know. This being on the table.
The city as officially.
We are city officials and we know. You have that, okay, I asked a question, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Way, you know, I I appreciate your position and, you know, I I don't think we're going to get anywhere with regard to where. Councilmember Willie's saying, so let's just cut that short and, you know, let's not belabor that point. Councilmember Moore, are are you in a similar situation perspective wise as Councilmember Way? With regard to the motion that's currently brought forth by Vice Mayor Chow?
Yes, and and I'm sure that as a former CUSD board member that. And with all of the the data available, that that. Most likely the Vice Mayor was aware of this coming through, and it was in in the newspapers as well. And we unfortunately also saw the the fail, the failure of both of the the parcel tax measures. And we all heard about the Citizens Advisory Committee and the recommendations which they made. For the the earlier on for the various schools that were potential closures. And I I think we're probably, we could go on for hours sharing the information that we actually do know about what happened.
Let's not do that. So, okay, thanks, Councilmember Moore. So. So if I understood you correctly, Councilmember Willie, you will not be seconding because of the reservations expressed by Councilmembers Way and Moore. And so, you know, we're left at at the original point here. I I do, you know, suggest that the. Committee assignees, you know, go forward and I will commit to you that if we have. You know, good progress with regard to, you know, some workflow and, you know, communication mechanisms. I've always been about making sure that we have, you know, that that good line of communication with our school districts. So with that, you know, I will also say that I think this is, you know, part and parcel of a great, you know, type of communication. So, you know, really job well done there. We have about half an hour left and we have one agenda item remaining as well. So I would like to turn our attention to that, having no motion on the table for item number 12. Let us go to item number 13. The subject for item number 13 is to consider a report on the Chamber of Commerce services. And payment included in the accounts payable report ending December 20th, 2021. And to further consider the approval of the accounts payable report. From which the Chamber of Commerce Services and Payment item is pulled here. So let us go to our city staff member and so. City Manager Trup, I'll go ahead and go straight to Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager. Tina, do you have a presentation on this item for public and the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a short presentation, so let me just share my screen real quick. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, your screen is visible, visible.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public and staff. I'm Tina Kapoor, Economic Development Manager. And we're here today with a staff report and presentation in regards to the services provided by Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. So as we begin here, I just want to point out that the city of Cupertino has had a longstanding partnership with the Cupertino Chamber. Which is a nonprofit business and community advocacy organization. And as background, on February 1st, council directed staff to provide a summary of the services that the chamber provides to the city and its businesses. In exchange for the annual payment made by the city. The city has paid the chamber $16,000 each year, which can be dated back to at least 2008. The city also has paid a 1,500 membership fee to the chamber. And this fee is consistent with the chamber's membership fee structure where members pay based on a number of employees. So looking at the city and chamber relationship, the chamber really has historically, and we will talk about this in detail in just a moment. The chamber has been an extension of the economic development for the city and they've been the lead outreach arm. For the city during good and bad economic times, as well as a service delivery conduit between the city and Cupertino businesses. In addition, the chamber has served as an important feedback mechanism. To understand business constituents' needs and concerns as new policies, programs, and changes in economic conditions develop. Whenever we're looking at any programmatic or policy changes, for example, the chamber is a great vehicle for us to go. for example, the chamber is a great vehicle for us to go to, to really get the feedback from business constituents in terms of concerns or recommendations or opportunities that they see that, um, can help inform our thinking. And with close to 300 members strong, that covers a wide variety of businesses. The chamber represents the logical partner in ensuring that key information and critical services reach the local business audience. So as we talk about the specific services, the chamber, uh, did provide a letter, uh, that was dated March 1st of 2022, which is included in the agenda packet for this item along with the staff report. Um, this letter outlines in detail the services that the chamber provides. And, um, the two objectives that we just talked about, right? One, the feedback mechanism, and two, um, information dissemination are presented in that letter. In addition, some of the services I'm highlighting here, which are really good examples of the substantive work that the chamber does. So some of the activities that the chamber has been providing, um, as we can see here, the Legislative Action Committee, the Asian American Business Council, um, producing, distributing information and economic development data packets, outreach consistent with the economic development strategy in the past and supporting local businesses with efforts around ribbon cuttings, brand openings, and other events. Although many in-person activities and events were scaled back everywhere during the pandemic, uh, the chamber's letter also highlights how the chamber pivoted during the pandemic and adjusted the services as appropriate. And some of them, again, are listed here, um, such as door-to-door, uh, surveys, uh, supporting initiatives and campaigns like I Love Cupertino and Shop Cupertino and Cupertino Fairs. Um, chamber has also helped out with, helped out with job fairs. And of course workshops and seminars on, um, various topics such as predatory ADA lawsuits, bankruptcy, PPP loan forgiveness, employee retention, tax credits, um, access to capital, et cetera. Of course, as economic conditions continue to evolve, or we could say normalizing once again, um, you know, staff is working with chamber to, to, to formalize all of this work along with any future services. And we're having some real good conversations and we'll be bringing those to council when we have some sort of, uh, an agreement. Um, so we're working towards that. And as part of this process, we surveyed cities in Santa Clara County to explore how other cities have structured their partnerships with the chambers. Um, the details are shared within the staff report, but just quick points from our research, um, again, uh, are here. So all cities that we surveyed have some sort of a partnership with their chambers. Out of the 10 cities on the list, only four of them actually have a formal agreement in place. Um, chamber services in these cities range from business, providing business assistance to operating a visitor center, to performing or augmenting, um, economic development function for the city. And the city support has included, um, again, within these cities, uh, have included access to space, um, charging nominal rents and/or, um, direct funding that has ranged from $295 to well over a million dollars. And so to conclude, the chamber, uh, you know, I would just say, provides a wide variety of support services for the city of Cupertino. Uh, they've done so for, you know, quite a number of years now. And the chamber is here today, um, um, along with me. If you have any specific questions regarding historical activities, um, and with that, our recommendation is for council to receive this report and to accept that counts payable for the period ending December 20th, 2021. Um, with that, thank you for the opportunity to present. And we'll hear if you have any questions at this point. I'd like to acknowledge Rick Kitson, um, Director of Communications, as well as Claudio Bono, Board Chair, who are both here from the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Um, and thank you very much.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Tina. I'll go over to our members of the public that would like to speak on item number 13. I'll remind everyone, we're on item 13 now. And so if you have your hand raised for another item, uh, please, uh, please lower it. And so, um, our first hand raised is from Ajian Li. Uh, Ajian, you'll have three minutes. And for other members of the public, if you'd like to speak on this, you'll need to have your hand, uh, raised by the time our first speaker is done. So welcome, Ajian.
Hi, I, I would like to, you know, I mean, um, I really sorry about, you know, what, I mean, what we will say, uh, tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna mute you. Um, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna remind everyone again, um, that this is item number 13. And so I'm gonna go to Leanna Crabtree, and Peggy Griffin also has a hand raised. Uh, Leanna, welcome. You'll be our first speaker. And I'll remind our other members of the public, if you have a comment on item number 13, uh, please raise your hand by the time that Leanna is done speaking. Welcome, Leanna.
Uh, good evening, council and staff. Um, thank you for your consideration of this item. I appreciate the staff presentation. Um, sort of, I guess in the spirit of the, um, the ceremonial item today of sort of, uh, understanding how our tax dollars are spent and, and the processes that go along with, um, the allocation of city funds. I have some questions, uh, about this arrangement that we have with the chamber. I sent my questions, um, this evening. I, uh, uh, fully expect no one's had any chance to even see that email. Um, so I'm just gonna quickly go through and, and hopefully some of these items can be addressed this evening. Um, so one of the items in the staff report stated that, um, there were just, there were, I guess, six cities that don't have formal agreements with their chambers, uh, you know, the, the various chamber organizations within their communities. Um, but I, I noticed that of those six, uh, and this was just, you know, my observation. And I, if I'm wrong, please correct me, that it seemed that, um, four of those six, not including Cupertino and not including one other city, uh, had expenditures with their chambers that were, uh, no more than a thousand dollars annually. But it seems that Cupertino has historically, uh, had sort of much larger, um, engagement amounts with the chamber. And it doesn't seem that we have a formal agreement. And I, and I, that's kind of the piece I don't understand. Um, I have a question about a memorandum of understanding, which is, uh, I guess the recommended staff, uh, option. And I'm wondering, what is the, uh, the authority of a memorandum of understanding? Um, who signs that document? And, uh, who, who, who is authorized to agree to that document? Does it go through the mayor and the council? Um, or is, is it strictly staff? Um, then I have another question, uh, related to an item that was, I guess, an account payable back from 2019. Um, it's, it's referenced specifically in my email, but it was a payment to the Chamber of Commerce of about $25,000. And the description is, um, website hosting, database subscription, and website design of $25,000. I'm wondering, was there a formal agreement for, for that action? And then, you know, what was that? Was this actually the I Love Cupertino, um, website? And, uh, and the I Love Cupertino website, uh, just one point. One thing that you can do on that website is buy an e-gift card. And, uh, which is a great idea, spend money in Cupertino. The one question I have though is, is that limited? The, the participating, um, businesses, are, are they only chamber businesses that get to participate? Which seems like, I don't want to make assumptions, but it seems like that might be kind of at cross purposes.
Leanna, that's, uh, your three minutes. Um, and our next speaker is Peggy Griffin, followed by our next to final speaker. After that, Stephen Scharf on this item. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. Um, I would like to reiterate what Leanna Crabtree brought up. Um, I went back and looked at accounts payable and I found references to a contract all the way back to 2006. But there's no contract. I looked for a contract and could not find it. Yet every entry in the accounts payable says first installment, second installment of a contract. So I think that a contract should be written, formalized, and the, um, expected deliverables should be listed. Also, um, in reference to the website, uh, there was $25,000, uh, for the development, but there's an ongoing fee for, it looks like maybe hosting, but there's nothing written on that. So, and it wasn't mentioned. So that ought to be included in this contract and the price is stated. Um, I, I do believe that the city and the Chamber of Commerce should have a good working relationship. But I think that a good working relationship is based on clear, a clear understanding of what's expected. And a contract does that. Um, also, one area that I would like the city attorney to cover is that the chamber has a pact that, uh, supports candidates, political. And we're giving them public funds that are supposed to be non-political. And yet, this chamber is funding candidates. So if they shouldn't be doing that, then the contract ought to state that? Or I, I'd like that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Stephen.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, I'll be short. I just wanted the city attorney to explain whether an MOU is sufficient for a city to be giving money to, um, an outside agency? Because I seem to remember that, um, when I was on council, we could not spend money without some kind of contract being executed that goes beyond just a memor- memorandum of understanding. So I wonder, has there ever been a contract with the chamber in the past? And if not, how was it possible that the city was, um, providing them with money? And if they shouldn't have been, you know, what recourse does the city have for past expenditures? So thank you. I'm done.
Uh, thank you, Stephen. Let's bring this back to council. Um, so we have a, a fairly straightforward recommended action, um, based upon the accounts payable, uh, item from, I believe it was December 22nd, 2021. Uh, but let's go to Councilmember Moore, uh, to start us off with any questions or comments and follow up to the staff report and public comment. Councilmember Moore?
Um, sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So, um, my tally going back is approximately $350,000 uh, without a contract. So I would like to hear, uh, the, the response from, uh, the city attorney about giving money to an entity, uh, without having a contract. Is that considered a gift of public funds? Um, and is that something the city's allowed to do? Um, uh, you know, for instance, uh, can the city just, uh, um, give money to a, a tree service without, without having a contract? And, and if it does, what's the danger there? And, uh, I'll, I'll start with that.
Uh, thank you.
So, so no, I, yeah, um, may I, Mayor? Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Uh, so, so, so no, so it's absolutely not a gift of public fund. Um, a gift of public fund occurs when there's an expenditure of, of, of money without any public purpose. And here, um, the chamber has been providing services to the city. I, I, I think, I think the question i- is whether there was a written contract and it appears, appears based on our research, there was not. That does not mean that there is, was not an enforceable agreement with the chamber to provide those services. Uh, then I think the, the, in, in reviewing the code, um, there, there doesn't appear to be any requirement for a written contract for ser- for services in this amount. That said, um, I, I think it's, you know, staff view that this is not best practice to allow this arrangement to continue. And, um, and, and it's definitely more appropriate to have a written agreement in place. And, you know, whatever we call that, whether it's a, a, a memorandum of understanding or some other form of agreement, it will be a, a, a written contract. I think, you know, the, the, the focusing on what that contract is called is, is, um, you know, a little bit beside the point, but there, but definitely the intent is to have a written contract and, and tighten up those, those procedures going forward.
Um, uh, through the mayor?
Sure. Well, you still have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, so with regards to the website, we have city staff. We have an IT department more than capable of, of doing a website. Uh, when I looked at the, uh, uh, I Love Cupertino website, I found that the calendar just sent me over to the Chamber of Commerce. I couldn't find who the, um, website owner was. I could only infer it by clicking on the calendar, which showed me the LAC meeting and their, the various chamber events. Um, so I, I think that, uh, that should have been put out, um, uh, given to our IT departments to, to build. And so, uh, how did we end up with a, um, an, an, a situation where, um, I, I don't really consider the Chamber of Commerce to be a website developer, right? Um, that's not really their mission or purpose, as far as I know. Uh, and, uh, so how is it that the Chamber of Commerce ended up receiving money to create a, a website as opposed to our own IT department? Or, you know, who was, who was running this, uh, this, um, this project? Like, who, who was responsible for, uh, sending the money there? How is it that, that staff, uh, in the finance department, uh, signed off on these checks without seeing where, where there was an agreement that, so that they could assign that payment to? Um, so who, who can give me some answers to that?
Uh, well, I do see that, um, you know, in addition to our, our staff member and, uh, city manager, we have representatives from the Chamber of Commerce here. Uh, welcome Board President Claudio Bono, as well as Director of Communications, Rick Kitson. Uh, would either Tina, Jim, Claudio, Rick, uh, like to speak to that with regard to the I Love Cupertino website? I, I think it might predate some, uh, of you, particularly our, our city staff members. Um, but, uh, Jim, you have your.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say that that predates a number of us here. Um, and I'll, we'll have to go and research that item in itself. Um, not that it makes anybody feel better. I'm not saying it's appropriate, but the different cities I've been in, we always have found contracts that might be out of date. And so that's our goal is to fix it, just like this one. So, um, how it happened and why it happened, uh, you know, that, if it goes that far back, it would be hard to figure it out. But now that we know about it, it is absolutely something that we do want to fix and create and have a, a good contract going forward. But we can, we can try and research more on, on that, that question.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Jim. And Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised?
Um, yes, I, I seriously have a problem with our finance department allowing the accounts payable statements to say to us, "First installment of the annual contract with the city of Cupertino." Because what, what does that mean? When I pick up that accounts payable statement, I see there's a contract. And so I'm happy, I move on. So I didn't like seeing that when I wanted to know what was in the contract, that there isn't one. Not only it, there isn't one, but there hasn't been one for at least since 2004. How does, how does all of these finance department individuals allow us to say that without having any documents to, to back it up? How does that happen? Um, also, we, in, in 2017, we took out full-page ads in a business directory for $8,000. Uh, we spent $500 for food, uh, truck coordination. Um, in going back to the I Love Cupertino project, it looks like it started around 2018. Uh, you've got a, a $5,000 project accrual. Um, you then have, uh, 2019, you spent $25,215 on a website and then another $11,852, another 8204. I mean, honestly, I'd like, I'd like to have an accounting going back, um, let's, let's say to 2015. 2015 to the present, everything that, uh, all the, all of the, uh, the accounts payable that went to the Chamber of Commerce, along with, uh, if there were any beneficial uses of, uh, city facilities, uh, at Memorial Park, for instance, where the fees were waived perhaps, uh, for a festival, anything like that. I'd like to have a full, full picture here. Um, and, and I don't, I don't think we should agree to any memo of understanding at this point until we fully understand, you know, what's, what's gone on here. Because I think it is a failing in our finance department, um, for one. And, and our, and our city leadership really needed to, um, get on top of this. Uh, and, and, you know, and I'm concerned moving forward because we're trying to put things together with, um, the new economic development. with the new Economic Development Manager and put together a real Economic Development Committee with the ordinance, you know, code backing it up that we haven't had. And without having a good understanding of what's gone on in this history, I think moving forward, we can repeat the same mistakes. And so we really need to understand what this, what the relationship with the Chamber is and have some more defined boundaries between the city and the Chamber, because it's very gray, what's been going on in the past. And I do think that the question, if they shouldn't have been given money, what recourse does the council have? I think that is an interesting question. When it comes to the website, I'm very concerned that something like that wasn't perhaps put out to bid. And if this is an ongoing expenditure, should it have been put out to bid for some other organization to provide some of these services, given how our procurement policy is being evolved right now because of our audit? So just a few things to think about, but I'm actually still uncomfortable with approving the accounts payable until we have a full understanding, or a more full understanding for how much money has been given overall. I'm pretty bothered by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I see that our Director of Administrative Services has her hand up. Christina, did you want to speak to the comments from Councilmember Moore?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, just briefly. I just wanted to give a rundown of how the process works for accounts payable. There is a two-approval process that happens in the department. So someone in the department is entering these invoices. A secondary level is approving the invoices. They then come to finance, where there is a spot check done on items. But however, we do not have the staff to check every single accounts payable item that comes before us to go in, dig into the detail. We make sure there isn't something attached to it, because there has to be backup for it when there's a payment going out. But just wanted to present a little bit about what that detail looks like and a little bit about the expectations in terms of the number of transactions that run through the department and the check that's being completed. We really rely on the departments to do that preliminary check, and then we do a high-level review.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Director Alfaro. And I will, you know, add to that, when we were going over a lot of these accounts payable in two thousand eighteen, when I was going over those line by line, I know that even then, four years ago, we had the software that could connect to those underlying documents. And so, you know, given the fact that Councilmember Moore is the other member of the Audit Committee from council, it might not be a bad idea to schedule time, whether to show her your financial system and show how those documents are interconnected. But that's definitely, you know, greatly appreciated with regard to indicating what the internal process flow is in terms of, you know, not necessarily checking every single accounts payable to see that there's underlying documentation there. But I know that it is readily available at the click of a button, which I thought was very impressive, you know, software to have at the time. So that's what I'd add to that. Jim, you had your hand raised. City manager, did you want to expound upon the Director Alfaro's...
No, you, Mayor, thank you. You had actually sort of said what I was gonna say about going through how the process actually works. And, you know, we've been going on, I don't know if it's come to council yet, we've been looking at our Moss Adams reports about procurement, and this is something that, you know, a very good reason why we should have a procurement officer, et cetera, on this. So, but you had mentioned more or less what I was gonna say.
Oh, absolutely. And I had a really good conversation, a one-hour conversation with the auditor from Moss Adams last week, actually, you know, largely about procurement. Yeah, so, you know, one thing I'll say before I call on Vice Mayor Chow, and I will note that we're six minutes till midnight, so if necessary, we'll go ahead and continue this item. You know, one thing I'll say is that none of this really belies, I mean, in my opinion, the legitimacy of Councilmember Moore's point. You know, certainly if an agenda item, you know, or a description on the accounts payable indicates a contract, it would probably, you know, good to... Let me just go ahead and thank Councilmember Moore for, you know, being fastidious about, you know, observing these details. I think it's adhered to our benefit, you know, each time that these details have been pointed out. So, and like City Attorney Johnson pointed out as well, a contract doesn't need to be written, but it's, you know, probably a good idea here. One final point that I'll make, before I do call on Vice Mayor Chow, I think we will have to continue this, frankly, since we're, you know, really time limited. One final point I make is that, you know, in this case, a Chamber of Commerce is a 501(c)(6) organization. And the purpose of a 501(c)(6) organization is a little different from a 501(c)(3). And, you know, I know this, you know, primarily because I was once in Claudio's shoes. I was the Chamber Board President back in two thousand fourteen for our particular chamber. Its function is actually to lobby the jurisdiction that it's, you know, attached to. So the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, you know, lobbies the city of Cupertino. And so, you know, that's another nuance, I think, you know, staff, you know, be it Tina or Chris or Jim, that's probably a good idea to think about, right? When we're going through the memorandum of understanding and we're writing down documentation, let's just keep clear our roles, right? Because, you know, oftentimes, I see this, you know, as a broader problem as well. You know, people start to really misunderstand, you know, the various roles involved. I mean, we're public policymakers, you know, and at the end of the day, a lot of people think that, you know, we're here to get kicked around exclusively. But in fact, yes, we're actually there to, you know, weigh public opinion, but also, you know, to come up with a policy based upon, you know, evaluation and the best, you know, results of our consciences and, you know, synergies of all of the above. But, yeah, in this case, it's probably a good idea to, you know, consider the fact that this organization exists as a lobbying mechanism by their business community of the jurisdiction. So to kind of keep that separated within the language of the MOU would probably be a pretty good policy point from the perspective of our city. So let me go to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor, you know, I apologize, I've only left you with maybe a couple of minutes before. I'm gonna have to cut you off. You know, I could go ahead and continue this item till our subsequent meeting on April fifth. Happy to do that. But Vice Mayor, if you have a point that you want to make within a minute or so, and if you wanted to share that minute with, you know, Councilmember Way, great. If you could both, you know, be that succinct about it. And let me go, Vice Mayor Chow, would you rather I just continue this at this point?
I want to make the point, so the, there are formal agreements with other cities, but each one is for a specific task in a specific year. None of those are ongoing, except Gilroy, but Gilroy is also for a specific program that they are paid by a percentage of grants they processed. So for, I think I would like to see clarity on what this, the grant from Cupertino is used by the Chamber for the interest of Cupertino. I mean, definitely, we want to have positive relationship with Chamber, but the letter from Chamber right now doesn't really separate that. Most of the things they listed are things Chamber would have done.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and cut you off here. So we're just a couple minutes till midnight, and I'll continue item number thirteen to our April fifth meeting. Jim, you have your hand raised. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say, instead of the April fifth meeting with the comments we've received so far tonight, and we are still working with the Chamber on coming back with a proposed contract, my suggestion is to table this for the moment, and then we can work, finish our time with the Chamber on a contract we can bring back, but also have at least some of these answers that the different council members have brought up.
Oh, sure. So, Jim, just so we kind of set general expectations, are we looking at later in April, such as the nineteenth? Or would you potentially be looking at the following month as well?
If not, second meeting of April or the first one in May, depending on, you know, working with the Chamber on the agreement.
Okay. Well, we'll table this until April or May. And so thanks very much for that input. And so that reaches the end of our agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and ask that we reserve our, you know, final comments with regard to, you know, council announcements or future agenda items at this point, since we're right at midnight. I do see hands still raised from our city manager and Vice Mayor. Unless there's this burning urge to have to absolutely say something, Vice Mayor, if I call on you, I will cut you off, you know, once it hits twelve oh one. But did you have something that you wanted to very briefly say before I adjourn this meeting?
When it comes back, I want information on how the money is spent for the past, since two thousand fifteen, as Councilmember Moore said. And then what we...
Okay. Vice Mayor, I'm gonna cut you off. Okay, so that's, you know, those points have been made. I appreciate that. Well, thanks very much, everyone. It is now March sixteenth, so I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our regular council meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We will see you at our next regular council meeting on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Thanks very much for a great set of discussions this evening, and we will see you next month. Meeting adjourned. Take care.